Well, good evening, everyone. How's everyone doing tonight? All right, good to hear. I see we've got a lot of folks here. I imagine because we have some pretty cool things going on tonight. We got certainly a proclamation here with Royal Oak's support of the United Way's 21-day Equity Challenge, seeing what we can do and how we can do it to ensure that, you know, we tackle the tough topics of inequality in our community. And we also have, which has been waited for a long time, our Sustainability Plan here tonight. I see Dr. Herzog, I see Julie Lyons-Bricker, I think I saw her somewhere here. There she is back there. And we're going to have an amazing presentation today, how we're going to hit some pretty aggressive targets here as a community, and the things we can do, you know, as a city, but all the things that we can do here as a community as well. And I see we have some young members from our community here, too, that are probably doing some pretty cool stuff related to sustainability as well. So eager to hear what you guys have to say. All right, well, it is 7:31, so I am going to call to order the Monday, May 9, Royal Oak City Commission meeting to order. We're going to begin with an invocation by Commissioner Douglas, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I ask that you stand if you can.
Yesterday was Mother's Day. I spent some time thinking about my mom, and also thinking about some other mothers. A mother in Ukraine, writing her daughter's information on her body with a marker in case they're separated. A mother in Guatemala who sends her 10-year-old son away with a coyote, not knowing if he will live, let alone find freedom, but knowing that his life cannot be worse than where he is. A mother in Africa walking six kilometers in flip-flops to carry buckets of polluted water, the only that is available, back for her family. Your mom doesn't have to do that for you. Maybe she brings home a paycheck, makes chocolate chip pancakes, or humors your spouse. If you didn't already, it's not too late to thank her for what she does, and what she, what any mother would do to shield you from the world's injustice and terror. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, there we go. All right, that brings us to item four tonight, which is the approval of the agenda. I'm looking at Commissioner Macy over there.
Okay.
I understand you wanted to add something, or some buzz going around the community?
Yes. I'd like to move approval of the agenda with the addition of an item to discuss trying no mow May in Royal Oak.
Okay, no mow May.
Yes, as proposed, I believe, at public comment.
Okay, that will be proposed at public comment?
Yeah.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Macy, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Colo?
So you want to put that before number eight, right, Commissioner Macy?
Oh, I can't see.
After the agenda?
7.5?
Yeah, 7.5.
Okay, I'll do it at 7.5. Okay, does everyone understand the motion? It's the agenda with that addition being our first agenda topic between seven and eight? All right, any discussion? With none, I'll call for the vote. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. We've established an agenda, and it's a little bit out of order here than we're used to, but we do have a proclamation supporting and participating in the United Way for Southeastern Michigan 21-day Equity Challenge, and I believe we have Mr. Ebron here tonight. Help there, yes, sir? All right. If it's all right with you, I'd love to do the honor of reading this proclamation. And thank you firsthand for being there tonight and supporting us as well. So this is a resolution supporting participation in United Way for Southeastern Michigan's 21-day Equity Challenge from May 20th to June 17th, 2022. Whereas the city of Royal Oak stands firmly against racism and discrimination in all its forms, and whereas progress against discrimination requires we openly talk about, learn about, and confront racism, sexism, and inequity as a community; and whereas there is a long history of racism, discrimination, and segregation within our region, which has adversely impacted economic outcomes, particularly for communities of color; and whereas we believe local government plays a vital role in ending systematic racism and institutional biases that marginalize members of our community; and whereas, as a city commission, we value every community member and are committed to creating an equitable and anti-racist system that honors and elevates all; and whereas we believe we must seize the moment to provide ourselves, city staff, our community, and our community the necessary time and resources to facilitate discussions on race, inequity, and privilege to foster better understanding of our full history and our collective humanity. Now therefore, be it resolved, the city of Royal Oak recognizes the United Way for Southeastern Michigan 21-day Equity Challenge as an important opportunity to expand our knowledge and understanding of the historic and persistent inequalities that play a role in our social and economic landscape here in southeastern Michigan. And be it further resolved, the city of Royal Oak will sign on in support of the event as an official equity partner and encourages all municipal staff and members of the community to participate in the 21-day Equity Challenge to deepen our shared understanding of and develop our willingness to confront racism, sexism, and other forms of inequity and inequality in our community. Mr. Ebron, it's my honor on behalf of the city of Royal Oak to present you this proclamation, and the microphone is yours, sir.
Well, good evening to everyone, to Mayor Fournier, to city commissioners, and everyone in their respective places, on behalf of Dr. Darian Hudson, Tanya Adir, and the entire staff at United Way for Southeastern Michigan, and you all as residents. We appreciate your support and your commitment to making our nation, our cities, and our surrounding areas, particularly as it relates to southeastern Michigan, more diverse, equitable, and inclusive. We invite everyone to join us. The kickoff is May 20th, so you can sign up today. Go ahead, pull out your devices. I know you're on, I know it's on mute or on silent, but we want you to sign up at unitedwaysem.org/equitychallenge. We want you to tell all of your constituents and your friends, and this is about us teaching, learning, and growing together. This is not calling anyone out, but calling everyone in to a more inclusive and equitable community. Again, thank you all for the resolution. This is actually the second year that you all have done this, so we appreciate it, and we appreciate your stance for equity. Thank you.
We appreciate it. I feel like the gratitude goes the other way, because you've been very helpful, the United Way, helping us with our, during the last 21-day challenge, you know, accomplishing the goals, and we build on it, and we hope to build on it for a very long time. All right, this brings us to public comment tonight. The city commission values and relies on the input of our fellow citizens to make decisions. Now is the time set aside for the public to address the city commission on any city-related issue, both on the agenda or not on the agenda. As there's no public hearings tonight, this will be the only time that you'll be able to address the city commission. I ask that comments be directed to the city commission as a whole and not to individual commissioners. If you wish to speak tonight at public comment, please proceed to the center aisle. I guess we're not going to do the line tonight. We can just raise our hands, and I'll call on you. Please be mindful that the city commission wants to hear from everyone who wishes to speak tonight, so comments are limited to three minutes or less. There's a timer there to help you keep track of your time. Please note that the city commission will not respond directly to questions during public comment. However, we are taking notes, and we'll address those when the agenda topic is discussed. And if your matter isn't on the agenda, our city manager is taking notes, and he follows up accordingly. And never hesitate to, if there is a follow-up you're looking for, we have the awesome, amazing community engagement specialist Judy Davids right there, and if you give her your contact information, she'll be happy to help point you in the right direction. And of course, if you don't wish to speak tonight, just here for the funness of a city commission meeting, you can always email us, and we'd be happy to, you know, hear your thoughts and concerns via that avenue. I do sometimes take a little privilege here, since we have some folks that are going to be changing the world in about, you know, 10, 20 years here, but they have homework assignments tomorrow. I'm going to ask that the B-tweens come up, so we can talk about all the buzz you guys have going on in the community. We can comb over everything, and...
Oh, Jesus.
All right.
Good evening, sir.
Sure.
Good evening, mayor and city commissioners. We have been working for the past year to make Royal Oak a B-city. We have gotten the application and resolution approved by both you, the Royal Oak City Commission, and B-city. Now and moving forward, we are hoping to do more in our community to help our pollinators. We're proposing that we try out a no mow May. What this would mean is during the month of May, if they so choose, residents of Royal Oak can let their lawns grow longer than the eight inches allowed by the city ordinance. So in this month, the lawn that your lawn can't grow past a certain length would not be enforced. This would greatly help our pollinators transition into the spring and summer months.
No mow May would not be required for residents. It would be optional for those who choose to do it and help our pollinators. The reason no mow May would be good for pollinators is that some of the plants we usually think of as weeds, like dandelions, are actually a very good early source of food for the bees and can greatly help them with their pollination work.
We are proposing that this May, we should try out not enforcing this ordinance. This will give us information and feedback from our residents on how this will work in the future. Then we can take that information and apply it to our future no mows, if we so choose to follow through this plan.
A huge thanks to Judy Davids for making this sign for our no mow May. This sign will be available for residents to show their neighbors that they are letting their lawn grow out. It would be used to let others know that the owner supported pollinators and that the reason for letting their lawn grow out. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Isn't that wonderful? All right, I call first dibs on mowing my lawn this May. Hand it to my kids starting in June. Wonderful, wonderful. No mow May, all right, perfect. I think we're going to be discussing it here a little later, so item 7.5. All right, I guess we're going to just do the traditional way we did the Iowa last time, but if you guys want to put up your hands, I can call. Yes, sir.
Well, greetings, Mr. Mayor. Steamed body. My name is Senator Marshall Bullock. I'm just here to introduce myself. I currently represent the city of Detroit, Lincoln Park, Allen Park, and South Gate, and due to our new redistricting committee, where I live is now thrust into Oakland County, Royal Oak Park, Ferndale, Birmingham, and all the municipalities in between. I have a background in working in the city of Detroit in the mayor's office and administration for several years. I sit on several committees. I sit on insurance and banking. I sit on transportation and infrastructure, energy and technology, and I'm the vice chair of family, seniors, and veterans. I'm the chairman of the Michigan Legislative Black Caucus. I was assigned to three task forces, the coronavirus task force for racial disparities, marijuana regulatory agency for social equity, and child welfare improvement, and have 35 years of social work. I'm no stranger to Royal Oak. I've worked in Royal Oak, even in my days at working at the zoo, family and friends. I enjoy all the amenities of Royal Oak with my family, and I just wanted to extend my hand and introduce myself and let you know I'll be, it is my desire to continue to serve the great people of Michigan, especially in southeast Michigan, bringing Oakland County and Detroit together. So that is what I'm here for today.
Wonderful. Well, thank you, Senator. Really appreciate you making the time tonight.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Herzog.
Amanda Herzog, 306 Rhode Island Avenue. I'm excited to be here tonight to finally present the Royal Oak Sustainability and Climate Action Plan. You guys have been hearing me speak about it for a while. It has been a journey. The discussion of the Sustainability and Climate Action Plan first was discussed at the Environmental Advisory Board on the February 2019 agenda, and just as we were about to bring a climate emergency resolution to the commission, the pandemic began. So this usually would start to lose volunteers and engagement, but even though the EAB had to pause for a moment, it wasn't for very long. So the resolution acknowledging the climate emergency was adopted, the Royal Oak greenhouse gas inventory was completed, the Environmental Advisory Board ordinance was passed, so that we could bring recommendations to the city commission in a more meaningful way. We engaged the Royal Oak community in the SCAP kickoff, community events, surveys, and working groups, and now we are bringing the Royal Oak Sustainability and Climate Action Plan to you tonight. This was all done while dealing with the crazy, indescribable-at-times, and never-ending day of the pandemic, juggling kids, parents, fur babies, working from home, Zoom meetings after Zoom meetings, binge-watching TV shows, and all the anxiety that comes with a pandemic. While some of these things have been changing as the pandemic evolves, I think that the past two years have been the EAB's most productive and meaningful years for Royal Oak. And it is all because of the EAB members' hard work and dedication to our city and the environment. They are just the most amazing people that volunteer their time for the betterment of Royal Oak, and I want to give them the most sincerest of thank yous to the EAB. I also want to thank the city staff. They see me coming with my list, and they don't run in the opposite direction, and they probably should. And they are always willing to help us move things forward. I want to thank the numerous Royal Oak community members that volunteered to participate in the SCAP process. Their expertise was invaluable, and we have the most robust and thoughtful plan because of the community's involvement. Royal Oak is home to the best and the brightest. I want to thank the SCAP task force, the shepherds of this process. They wouldn't, there wouldn't be a plan today without their commitment, the numerous hours spent planning, implementing, reviewing, advising, and the list goes on. And finally, I would like to thank Mayor Fournier and the city commission for being champions of this work and seeing the current and future needs of our city. And finally, Royal Oak is a leader in environmental sustainability, but this is only the first step in reaching our 2050 net-zero climate goals. Together, we will have to continue to engage and build relationships in order to work toward a healthy, equitable, and sustainable Royal Oak for future generations to come. But thank you.
Well, thank you, and thank you to the EAB. I mean, you guys have done amazing work. I can't even believe we're here. I mean, the amount of hours that you put in, and this is what I want to just, I know I'm ad-libbing here in public comment, which is a little inappropriate, but the amount of hours that are put in by community volunteers to make a meaningful and material change in this community, it should just put everybody in awe. I mean, there's always an issue here. We're always debating things up and down, left or right, but at the core of it, our community begins and ends with a spirit that you can see right here standing in front of us, that you could see with the B-tweens, people actually picking up a pencil and paper, picking up their Rolodex, you know, going to the library, doing their research, and actually making a meaningful difference, not just for us today, but like Dr. Herzog said, for generations to come. So I'm going to open it up. We can give them an applause for these community volunteers. All right, Mr. Ashley.
Good evening. My name is Alan Ashley, president of Royal Oak Manor. Two things. One, if you go past Williams Street, you'll see that almost all the balconies have been enclosed. We're sitting on about ninth floor. After they're enclosed, they'll be fully carpeted, fully air-conditioned with new heat pumps, so we can use that whole area for summertime. We're almost done, knock on wood. We're hoping for May 31st to be completely finished with the remodel of Royal Oak outside, except for some landscaping that will be done during the summer. And some, but other than that, the whole first floor will be, is all redone, all the apartments. We have 13 ADA apartments, which is the most in co-ops. We will have all-new heat pumps and all, everything done, new lighting, new emergency cords for all the members in their apartments, so if you slip and fall, you pull the cord in the bathroom, or your living room, or your bedroom, if you have a bedroom. So some apartments will have three, others will have two, so that's all taken care of. The same thing I want to say is I want to support the police department, and they're not approving the Arts Beats and Eats marijuana. Royal Oak Manor sits in the middle of Arts Beats and Eats. We have a major problem with Arts Beats and Eats people parking in our parking lots. We had the same problem this past weekend with Royal Oak Bloom. I was during, on Mother's Day, we caught four or five cars trying to park in our parking lot, and we told them, "You can't park here," but they said, "We could." I said, "No, this is our parking lot. This has residential signs, and we have signs all over." I talked to the police department. They say, "We have recognized this." So this is kind of be fair warning to Arts Beats and Eats and the Rock and Ride and others, that Royal Oak Manor parking lot, we will, even though we expanded our parking lots, that's for residents, you will be towed. No questions asked, you will be towed, and I, what I understand, on the weekends, it's 350 bucks a day. So it's expensive, but we will be towed, and you will be ticketed. So just fair warning to these people, especially the city, will you please remind these people that come in, that Royal Oak Manor parking, both parking lots, are ours, not the city's. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ashley. When's the big party, by the way?
We're hoping, well, since my, I am being termed out. I've been my three years as president. I have to take a year off. Hopefully, it'll be in about mid-June, we will have the party, but I will let you all know.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
All right, who's next? We'll go with this gentleman here in the front with the, I think it's pink, yeah. After doing this job for so long, I think I'm colorblind, so forgive me if I get the color of your car.
No problem. All right. All right, my name's Joseph Fisher. I was living down in Virginia for a long time. I'm originally from here, graduated from Kimball here in 2000. Live downtown here now. I came tonight because I noticed a lot of, you know, we all know what happens on Fifth Street every Friday and Saturday night when the weather's nice, right? I mean, we've all seen it. And I'm thinking it would be great if we had something like other cities in America have experimented with called a nightmare. And what the nightmare does is he's like an emissary between the city and the patrons in getting feedback and trying to essentially calm any situations down, things like that, so they don't get out of hand. And also, I don't think it would be out of line to have always two patrol officers in that area on, you know, very packed nights. I think, I think that's completely reasonable, just like we would during Rock and Ride or Arts Beats and Eats. Speaking of Arts Beats and Eats, definitely no to marijuana sales, marijuana consumption. I'm a marijuana, marijuana consumer and customer, and I still think it's a bad idea to have downtown, because you don't need to get down here. There were so many places to get it, other places, and, yeah, it's unnecessary. And the only people who are going to really abuse it are people who come in from out-of-state for some of the musical acts possibly, not respecting, you know, because it's somewhere else. So I just think, you know, it's a bad idea. Parking, well, I just got back. I'm really sad about that. But I will say, if they're available, whatever meters we can salvage from the ones that were painted, I think they all should go to the Royal Oak Historical Museum. There should be an installation there. And lastly, I do Uber and Lyft, and I think it would be interesting if, you know, how we've got it blocked off at Fifth and Washington with the barricades. So I think if we re, for lack of a better word, landscaped that area properly, we could have an Uber pickup zone, and we could have an Uber staging lot for people, and maybe if we worked with Uber, the cars could wait in the staging lot, just like you would in, at the airport. And so you sit in, you sit in the staging lot until you get a request, and then you go up to the pickup point, and it'll be like, you know, I'm in spot one, two, three, or four. So I think that would be really useful. It would increase safety. I think the party buses belong in the staging area as well.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Good idea.
Take care.
Thank you. All right. Yes, sir.
Mayor Fournier, members of the city commission. My name is Russell Wright, and I live in Ardmore, just north of the country club. I'm in here to support the Sustainability Task Force. I was a member of the Mobility Subcommittee. I do, however, worry about its implementation. I only see the beginnings of collaboration and cooperation between city departments, which will be necessary for this to be a success. You have the, have started this, and really, it'll be up to you to provide the leadership to have this really go in-depth in order for this and other task forces that you have set up to be successful for those recommendations. I have an example, and we had a water upgrade around Red Run Park, which is just close to where I live. That park is on Gerard. It's a major shortcut between Campbell and Rochester. Like all our streets, as you've experienced, as if you walk and bike, like I do, that the traffic is exceeding speed limits, rolling through stop signs, going through stoplights, not there, but other places. Red Run is highly used by children. It's soccer, other sports there. There's a playground where parents, all during the day, and grandparents bring their kids. That upgrade was a perfect opportunity to address some serious safety issues on Gerard and to work collaboratively across many departments. Perfect time for collaboration, not only, it's not just the police department's responsibility, it's really all of the departments. I mean, water, sewer, highway, sidewalk, parks, recreation, parking, all could have been working on that project to bring more, bring a safe environment to that park. There are so many physical things that could have been done to make the area safer. For instance, just off the top of my head, crosswalks that are signed and actually painted, children at play signage, bike lanes, handicap access for the grandmothers that bring their, and grandfathers that bring their kids there that can't get into the playground. That's just a few of the things. And you have another opportunity with the Rochester Road upgrade, and there's the Wagner Park and the school up on 13 Mile, to bring the departments together and allow for this to happen. So what I'm saying is that in order for this to happen, you are the leaders, and you have to provide the leadership to make sure the departments work closely and collaboratively and continue as they are during these tasks, have during these task forces, to work with the community. And actually, I thank you for having these two task forces, but the job isn't over. I mean, your leadership is needed beyond today's resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. And thank you for your help in volunteering with the SCAP. In the back with the yellow hat on, or, yeah, looks yellow from here, sorry.
Good evening. My name's Andrew Deja. I'm an employee of Arts Beats and Eats, and I am also a resident of the Center Street Place Apartments located at Center and 7th Street, formerly known as Urbain on Center. Over the weekend, I went door-to-door and asked my neighbors how they felt about the proposal for the sales and consumption around the apartment. Of the 13 units, out of the 31 units that are in the two buildings, so 13 people answered the door, and of the 13 answers, all signed stating that they do not object to the proposal. And being a resident and also someone familiar with the culture of younger people in Royal Oak, I don't believe you'll have any objections from anybody in those units if you did approve the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ashley.
Can I submit this to anybody? Survey?
Actually, yeah, you can submit it to the city clerk here down to your left.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. In the blue blazer?
Good evening. Thank you for your time this evening. My name is Kevin Maher. I'm a past Royal Oak resident, currently residing in Troy. I'm also a Friends of the Main Art Boardman. Board Member. In the coming weeks, you will be asked to approve a planned development on the current site of the Main Art. As you look at this proposal, I would ask that you consider the following information in regards to the economic and cultural life of downtown. A recent study found that movie theater patrons spend an equal amount on movie tickets as they do in the surrounding business, businesses on movie night. That number is even higher for arthouse movie theaters due to the more affluent demographic. Given this information, our group estimates that an arthouse theater in downtown Royal Oak will bring an annual economic impact of between 1.4 and 1.8 million dollars to downtown while attracting nearly 40,000 patrons. Some people have questioned why we need a second movie theater in downtown, but the emphasis for our nonprofit model is to be community-based. Programming and events geared towards the community as a whole, including partnerships with OCC, Oakland University, and Royal Oak Schools. In a not, in a for-profit movie model, their goal is to keep as much money within the four walls as possible, adding bowling alleys, sportsbook gambling rooms, and full-service restaurants alongside family movie theaters, lessening the impact on the surrounding businesses. While our primary goal is to save the Main Art Theater as it stands today, should you approve the proposal from North Main Square Developers, the Friends of the Main Art asks that you consider strongly recommending that for the good of downtown Royal Oak, they make every effort to work with our group to include an arthouse cinema in the new development. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Maher. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Fournier, and thank you, City Commissioners, for your time and service to the community. My name's Jason Kriziac. I'm the Acting President of the Friends of the Main Art Theater, and I'd like to invite you all to our next rally, which will be May 21st at 2:00 PM. That's a Saturday. That will be in front of the Main Art Theater. It'll be an opportunity to talk to supporters, get a perspective in the community about the commitment that our group has to the Main Art Theater. And the last one we had was a lot of fun. I want to really appreciate the police department. They were great that day with crowd control and everything, so I wanted to say that on the record. Thank you to that. And on the community effort that we've seen two great examples of, and I definitely want to join in applauding Dr. Herzog and the effort put forward, that's the same spirit that this group is motivated by, an entirely community-based effort. As Kevin laid out, this is not a for-profit model. This is a, a community-based nonprofit model, which is really, our goals are entirely different than what we see at the Imagine Theater, which is, you know, we all know how close it is to the Main Art. A lot of people have asked, what can the city do? So I want to come tonight with a few suggestions. You know, there's varying levels of involvement that the city could choose to participate in. One of them is purchase Farmington Civic Theater nearby. That's what Farmington decided to do. The city's involvement was designed to retain the theater in Farmington's downtown, acknowledging its importance to the community as a landmark and a draw. I think we can all agree that a similar title could be placed on our beloved Main Art Theater. A second idea would be a land swap. It would be something that Muskegon is taking part in right now to develop their waterfront, swapping private land for public land to make, to inscape a public benefit for the community of Muskegon. And just this year, in the Michigan State budget, the 2022 budget, the state of Michigan allocated 1.5 million dollars to assist in that project. So there's a lot of money that could be accessed to help in such a project. Another idea for Royal Oak's participation would be a partnership, collaboration, cooperation. Kevin alluded to some partnership with Oakland University, OCC, Royal Oak Schools. We've already talked to professors at Oakland who see the potential of having a learning institution in downtown Royal Oak focused on the arts. And another way the city can help is as a facilitator, bringing all parties into the room and working for a win-win solution, which we all believe is possible there. So I appreciate your time and your attention to this effort, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kriziac. All right. Don't worry, you don't have to put your seatbelts on. I think I used that joke last time.
Was that just as funny then?
It was. It's good. I mean, it's been two weeks. Yes, ma'am.
It's a little rough.
Yes.
I ask that you not start that clock until I pass out some things to you.
Well, can you, can you blame down to the, to the city clerk this way?
I'm sorry, I don't have one.
Hello. My name is Catherine Howell. My husband Larry and I are almost 50-year Royal Oak residents and now live in our second Royal Oak home at 1026 Pinehurst Avenue. I wish to speak to Consent Agenda Item 7O, Approval of the 2022 Oakland County West Nile Virus Fund Program Grant. On September 9th, 2020, my husband became suddenly ill with a high fever. The fever persisted over the next several days, and he became progressively weak and unable to walk unassisted. A trip to Beaumont's Emergency Room put him in the hospital for six days. Multiple tests were done to try to determine the cause of his illness, to no avail. A team of infectious disease doctors ruled out COVID, any bacterial infection, or any contagious disease transmitted by human contact. All indicators pointed to some sort of viral infection. His fever finally broke, and I brought him home for a slow recuperation to regain his strength. After we got home, a doctor's hunch led to a blood draw to search for antibodies for West Nile virus. The blood sample had to be sent to Mayo Clinic and came back positive, showing that my husband had had West Nile virus. We got a one-hour phone call from a nurse at the Oakland County Health Division who wanted to track our whereabouts prior to the onset of the illness. West Nile virus is a disease that must be reported and is transmitted by a bite from a mosquito, who in turn has been bitten an infected bird. I support any program to prevent other families from having to endure what we did. I note, however, that we can use these county funds to purchase a larvicide for catch basins, or to purchase individually packaged insect repellent products for distribution to those in our community. Insect repellents are readily available, and my concern is that many of these freebies will be set aside and remain unused. Would it not be wiser to use our funds to purchase larvicide to kill mosquito larvae in their breeding grounds of standing water and thus prevent the proliferation of infected mosquitoes? I picked up this informative brochure from a rack at our Royal Oak Public Library. Thank you for your kind attention.
Thank you, Ms. Howell.
Oh, and I have two others, but I want to give my fellow citizens some space between me.
Thank you. Thank you. Wish your husband a continued full recovery. Okay, who's next? Mr. Bow.
Thank you, Mayor Fournier and the Commission. I just wanted to get up. I know that on the agenda today is Washington and the parking situation, and I, I wanted to support doing parallel parking because by going parallel parking, we would have more space for a greenway that could run north-south from Washington to, and Woodward to Main, Main Street and Normandy. I think we need to think about a greenway north-south in the city and certainly following the existing bike route that's been planned. And by doing parallel parking on Washington, it would give us the extra space to be able to have a 10-foot-wide greenway that people could bike, jog, walk, run strollers, or walk strollers on, what, what have you. So anyway, just wanted to plant that seed, keep thinking about that greenway north to south in Royal Oak. So, thank you.
Thank you, Paul. We'll do Mr. Harrison and then Ms. Bueckey.
Thank you, Mayor. Bill Harrison, 2729 Trafford, Royal Oak. I placed a packet on your desk that Berkeley provided regarding the proposed marijuana facilities in Berkeley. I request that you provide within 30 days on romy.com the merit-based criteria used for evaluating the proposed sites and the schedule of facilities proposed for Royal Oak in the same format that Berkeley used, which includes merit-based criteria and point schedule, applicant, entity, and associated Royal Oak business, proposed facility address, and evaluation score. Michigan marijuana law prohibits disclosure of applications to a Freedom of Information Act request in order to protect proprietary information. Nothing in the law prohibits disclosing the ranking, selection criteria, or the proposed locations of the facilities to the public. Regarding Arts Beats and Eats and their proposed marijuana sales and smoking tent, the permit should be denied, or the application should, should be denied. The police department provided a two-page memo outlining reasons why the request should be denied. Where was the DDA's opinion? The DDA contributes to Arts Beats and Eats every year, and the DDA was not even consulted regarding the marijuana tent. I talked to two of the members, and they knew nothing about it. Marijuana sales and smoking have no place in a family-oriented event. What will be next? Pot in the park? Let the camel's nose in the tent. And I know what you guys are like. It's gonna expand. The parking meter system, this is another example of your no-bid contracts. You're actually fomenting aggression. A pay station in Washington between Fifth and Sixth was knocked over sideways. It wasn't by a car. Irate people enter the first store available to vehemently complain. Angry customers say they will never come back. You're affecting business owners' livelihood right at the heels of the COVID shutdown. Each of you should spend some time downtown, talking to people that are trying unsuccessfully to use the system. The contract with Century Parking should be canceled. There are three, over 3,000 signatures on the petition of dissatisfaction. The system should be intuitive and not more complicated than the gasoline pump. You have given them the opportunity to cure, and they have not done so. Is the city making too much money on the fines? Is that what's going on? Returning to par, parallel parking, that's rude.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison.
Returning to parallel parking, let me finish.
No, Mr. Harrison. Ms. Bueckey, it's your turn.
Parallel parking.
Mr. Harrison, it's rude to take time from other people. Thank you, sir. Ms. Bueckey?
Good evening, and thank you. I'm here in support of the, excuse me, and Bueckey, B U E C H E, 937 North Center Street. I'm here tonight in support of the Sustainability and Climate Action Plan, and again, I thank all of you for your leadership, and I'm looking forward to the implementation of that plan. Two specific things I wanted to mention related to equity and accessibility and mobility. I saw in some of the recent news announcements, maybe in the DDA agenda, that there's gonna be a parking study done soon, and consulting money spent on that. I would recommend that that be changed to an accessibility and mobility study, and think about the access to our downtown from the perspective of people who don't drive, they're too young, or too old, or don't care to, like me, I walked here tonight. Or, and also considering the fact that we need more bike access. We have a very high walk score. We have a weak bike score. We have a decent transit score from our bus stops, from our senior high-rises, from our homes. We do not have safe crossings at our, most of our major streets. We need slow zones and some bikeways, as was just commented. And this is a cross-cutting issue that goes through a lot of different departments. So anyway, if there's gonna be money spent, we have to change our mind. It's just not about parking, it's about access. The fewer people that drive downtown, the more access there will be, and so does that. I'd also like to express my support for the Friends of the Main and encourage all of you to engage with them as best you can. Having worked and lived in many cities around the world and around the US, I think a dynamic citizen participation and interest in something like this theater is important to take into consideration and see if there is a win-win between you as governing officials, the community, as well as the developer, something that will benefit us all. As we know, in our society in the United States, we like to tear things down quickly. Other countries have war and bombs. They visit us, and they think we bombed it, but no, we've torn our own things down and destroyed them. And so we need to consider what heritage aspects Royal Oak would like to keep in place. Anyway, I appreciate you two all. It's hard work, so I'm not even gonna use my whole three minutes, which is a shot here.
Thank you, Ms. Bueckey.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Karlowsky.
Rick Karlowsky, 419 Virginia. Just to let everybody know that this Saturday, there will be another cleaning of the veterans' graves at the cemetery from, usually it's 10 to 10 to 12, but you can stay later. There was one this last Saturday, so if you didn't get a chance to go, please come out. You can find them and do your part to, to honor the people who, who gave so much for the country. Following of Mr. Harrison's comment, I find it amazing that this, this tribunal here is, does not want to, is trying to hide behind state law, which doesn't exist with regards to openness of who and who applied for marijuana dispensaries and where they did. I mean, let's just put it out in the open. Berkeley has. There's no law that says you can't. There's no state regulation that says you can't. There's something against FOIA accounts, and realistically, the applications are the response of not doing that makes sense because you don't want to get proprietary information, give somebody a head up who, who put in their application early, and then they get information later on. As far as the stuff going on for the application of a marijuana consumption tent at Arts Beats and Eats, frankly, I don't, I'm not gonna get into whether marijuana is better or worse than alcohol, and we consume alcohol and all that stuff. The simple fact of the matter is, if you burn this stuff, you're going to know it. I can sit on my porch and consume the better part of a fifth of bourbon, and unless I start singing, no one's going to know. That is not the case with marijuana. It just isn't. Now, if you want to have a consumption agreement here with stuff that is not as aromatic, knock yourselves out. I mean, I'm not gonna start arguing about the merits of marijuana or not. But there's a whole lot of neighborhoods that are gonna be downwind of this thing. There's a whole lot of venues that may be downwind of this thing. And I'm sorry, if I sat on my porch and decided to light up a few joints of marijuana, everybody within a half-block radius of me would know. It's not gardenias, and it's not lilacs. I'm sorry, it just isn't. So we have to take this into account. We have these kind of, kind of requests coming to us as to exactly who they're going to affect other than the folks who want to imbibe in it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Karlowsky. Ms. Wagman.
Good evening, Janice Wagman. Regarding the reverse angle parking on Washington, I could stand here for more than 10 minutes just reading all the social media posts on why people don't like it, why they will not be coming back, and why business owners are being hurt by this decision. What was included in the presentation by the former police chief, promised by Century, and what we got are vastly different. Hiring another firm to do another study to verify this is an absolute waste of time and money. You are driving, pun intended, people to other municipalities to spend their money. Is that the goal? If so, you, mission accomplished. If not, go back to the configuration we had before, reassign the parking enforcement personnel that are still employed at the police department, and make the downtown welcoming again. Regarding the agenda item to add cannabis sales and consumption at Arts Beats and Eats, personally, I'm not gonna weigh in on what, on the merits of alcohol versus marijuana. But I do care about this commission following the charter and ordinances. You held at least 20 public meetings and work sessions, conducted a survey, sought public input, and implemented the ordinance. Our ordinance that you passed states, nor shall a municipal license be granted or considered for a special license, including a marijuana event organizer or temporary marijuana event. Repeating- Repeating, they shall not be considered or granted. So why is it even on tonight's agenda? At the last meeting, ignoring the 88-foot distance was one of the most self-surpreyed interpretations I have heard. You knew what the majority of the people in the schools wanted. It was disingenuous to cherry-pick the survey results by stating that respondents were overwhelmingly in favor of putting them in an industrial zone, while at the same time ignoring that 73 percent, 73 percent of the people, wanted a setback distance from schools. Perhaps you should have told the people to educate their children in those meetings, because we change our requirements at the drop of a hat. Bottom line, you should be more open in your meetings and tell the residents the truth, which is, when you write this and other ordinances, you can cherry-pick and make substantial exceptions whenever you want. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner. All right. Who's next? I see somebody in the far back.
My name's Randy Painter, 721 Cattelpa, Royal Oak. Lifelong resident of Royal Oak. Couple things. First of all, I want to say, this speaker system, we need more amplification. If that can be worked out, it may be a screenshot of the speaker, so we can follow a little better during public comment, if that's possible. The other thing is an advertisement. On May the 14th, at Oakview Cemetery, the roar people, or anybody, is invited to help clean the graves up at Oakview Cemetery this Saturday, May 14th, from 10 till noon. Just want to put that out there. And the other thing is, I'm getting complaints left and right and back and forth from my friends and family about the new meters in Royal Oak. It seems to be a disaster. It's upsetting. It's almost embarrassing to me as a resident. And to be truthful, I avoid downtown at all costs now. I just want to make you aware of that, and if something can be worked out, that would be a plus. And that's about all I have to say tonight. I'll be back. You'll hear from me.
Thank you, Mr. Painter. All right. Anybody else tonight? We'll go with Ms. Hennessy.
President of the Royal Oak Memorial Society. Better take this off. Just other people have reminded you, but the Memorial Society is again cleaning veterans' graves May 14th at 10:00 a.m. at Oakview Cemetery. You are all invited to help. Bring your garden tools to clean around the headstones, water rags and rakes to clean up around there, and then wipe off the headstones. We did it last Saturday, and we didn't have a great turnout, but we had about 12 people, and we got a lot done. We will be back to place flags on the veterans' graves May the 28th at 10:00 a.m. at Oakview Cemetery, and everyone is welcome to help place the flags. We have over 2,000 veterans at Oakview Cemetery, and so it takes quite a few people to put out the flags. And I would also like to talk about the parking situation. It is totally out of control on Washington. To me, a study is not needed. Alls you have to do is read Facebook, talk to the citizens on the street, and talk to the owners of the businesses, and they can tell you what is needed. It's terrible. I even had a police officer out there when I was there trying to use a meter. I tried for half an hour, and it kept on saying, "Expired, expired." And he tried it three times, and the same thing happened to him. So it's not just us public people. It's the police that know how to use it. So doing a survey that's going to take two years is ridiculous, because it's going to put the retailers out of business, because people are not going to come back. And so we need to spend -- we don't need to spend any more money on surveys. Let's just talk to our people that know what's going on and take care of it. And then on the special event permit that is up tonight for Arts Beats and Eats, I'm really concerned about it, and I'm concerned about kids. I really don't know that much about marijuana, but I happened to be at the police station one time when they brought some in that they had confiscated from two people, and the smell was terrible. And if you have a whole alleyway of people smoking it and selling it, it's going to be a disaster. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hennessy. All right. Anybody else hasn't? I see a hand right there. Yes, ma'am. Yeah.
Phyllis Salter, North Lafayette. I have a list here. It's not well organized, but I'll do the best I can. I was very moved at the prior meeting by Mr. Cohen's concern for the students of the school, demonstrated by all that description of the building's guts. Deflect, deflect. Also, I was glued to the explanation of the ability to use bias in maneuvering of zoning of the school site. And then, of course, ended with everybody giving approval to these guys. Also moving was the concern of all the three neighborhoods being affected. I'm afraid that the people off of Woodward weren't getting as much news as the other areas. So how are we looking now? We were told that the transparency of applicants is not legal. I heard the process in Berkeley was for all to know who, what, and why certain applicants were or weren't selected. What can we believe? When residents here objected, they were told something like, "You voted for it, now you have to live with it." That's not really helpful. Clausen voted for marijuana. The residents did not want the facilities in the city, and they were respected by their will. They respect it, and they will have to come here. Maybe not. Due to current decreasing of the cost of marijuana, two things may be happening. It's cheaper to make it at home, and the individual facilities cannot compete with the lower prices of the larger integrated companies, causing smaller facilities to close. I went to the post office, another topic. Went to the post office a couple of weeks ago. You've heard this. Saw that funny thing sticking by my car, and there were lady parking behind me. She says, "Well, I can help you. I've done this." She tried, and it didn't work. Somebody was there getting names, what do you call it? And anyway, he said, "I know how to do this," and he couldn't get it to work. Put more money in, put more money in, blah, blah, blah. It didn't work. That, like, never went on. So I went into the post office, did my thing, and then I went to the police station, and I said, "You know, this is what happened." And he says, "Well, we can't do anything about it." He said, "You might get a ticket in the mail." I said, "Well, then what?" He says, "Well, then you go to court." I think this is -- I'm sorry. I have to laugh. So also, there's a publication called Royal Oak Today, and I got one a couple of weeks ago, and it listed goals such as helping seniors, green space, and affordability crisis. Seniors are still waiting. I didn't know that concrete was green. And affordable homes are being demolished and replaced with semi-cloned homes, nearly a million bucks. And I just heard about the pot tents at Arts Beats and Eats. That was just a couple hours ago. Have to laugh at this, too. How does this work? Can you enclose the air? Do you have police standing between everybody to see if everybody's doing what they're supposed to? Is anyone concerned with the density of all this? And as someone once said, "Who knows which way the wind is blowing?" The list is growing of -- gosh.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Can I just finish?
We got a full house tonight, so we got to make it through. But thank you.
Okay. Miss the best part.
All right. Who's next? In the back, in the blue.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Anton Semper. I've lived in Royal Oak for about 20 years, and I have always enjoyed it, and I still do enjoy it, and I appreciate your service here and everything. And I just wanted to make a couple of public comments about, first, the parking. Every morning, I like going to the proving grounds to get my coffee, and I, you know, I can back in and do it. I've got a Jeep arranged, and I've got a bike on the back, so it's a little difficult, but I can do it. It's not a problem. But I've seen other people, either younger people or elders, that have so much problems with it that they sometimes can't do it. I've also seen near accidents, and one of them being mine. Not my fault, though. But anyway, I think that there could be some improvements made on that, or just reviewing it, whether it's the same head-end parking that we used to have or parallel parking. I know it's an expenditure, but I think it's really important to look at. Now, with the meters, you know, I think it's cool to be, you know, up to computerize and saving money with meter people going out and everything. That's a good thing, I guess. But, and I'm pretty computer savvy. Took me a couple of times to figure it out. Okay? And I finally figured it out. I did lose some money along the way. I don't know if it's because you put in money too soon before it asked you to or not. But there should be some kind of resolution with, not necessarily the video instructions on there, but a larger way of getting out to the people to explain, or if there's corrections that have to be made on the actual computer program, something I think could be done to make it a little easier. When the meters first came out, I actually asked, like, 10 people over 10 days or so, because they were staring at it and just kept looking, and I said, "So what do you think?" And, you know, the responses I got were sometimes scary. Okay? Like, one lady turned, and she said, "I hate Royal Oak." I said, "No, it's okay. You just have to figure out how to do it." But so, there's challenges, and I think we can get over it. We just have to figure it out, you know, be innovative, and see if we can help the people or change the program somehow, so it can be easier to work and everything. So, and then the last thing, I think, I actually, I like the smell of marijuana, but I don't smoke it. So, but I think, like, for my 16-year-old, and we play Arts Beats and Eats every year. We played for the last four years, and it's a wonderful time. When we go to a concert, or when we're there, and she smells it, she goes, "Daddy, I'm feeling a little something. I don't know what's wrong with me." She's never smoked pot, and I, you know, we tell her it's probably, you shouldn't do it until you're 18, if you want to try it. So anyway, that's my concern, is the wafting through the air of these drugs that maybe aren't harmful, but if people aren't used to it, it might not be a good thing. Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. All right. Anybody else? Yes, in the back corner.
Thank you, Commissioners, Mayor. My name is Chip Izing. I've lived at 807 North Washington for the last 30 years, and currently, or last eight years, I work in retail on South Washington. And the, I know everyone's, a lot of people are talking about the parking meter situation, and it is, as a retail person that deals with customers daily and get comments, and as a resident of the city, and I love the city of Royal Oak, and to hear what they say to me about it, it's an embarrassment. And I had nothing to do with it. I mean, we had nothing to do with it. So really, to reconsider that Century system would be a good thing for the retailers and for the residents, because it is, it's an embarrassment to residents, and for the retailers, we are just, we can't help you. We can't help the customers, because we had nothing to do with it. And really, to get some retail input, you can do studies and more surveys and everything that all should have been done before, and you shouldn't need a brochure to tell you how to park, or a parking ambassador to go around and help people. It should be a no-brainer. You pull in, you park, put your money in the meter, go shop. And then that would really be a helpful thing for the city and for the retailers. Thank you, guys. Thanks a lot.
All right. Anybody else? Anybody that hasn't spoken already tonight? All right. Well, we're going to just do one public comment tonight, okay, Ms. Howell? So we have a busy agenda tonight. We did get your letter here, and we'll read it. All right. So going once, going twice. We're going to bring the meeting to this side of the table, and we are going to continue with our agenda tonight. Did I miss somebody? Okay. Ms. Howell, I said we're only going to do one public comment per person tonight. It's a busy night.
I had known that.
I understand. It's pretty much what we do most, almost every night. Okay. All right. Well, that brings us to the consent agenda, because we kind of already did the approval of the agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything off the consent agenda for this evening? Commissioner Douglas?
Item L, please.
L?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
M.
Anybody else? All right. The consent agenda consists of City Commission meeting minutes from April 25th, claims from May 3rd and May 6th, approval of purchase orders, declaration, disposal of surplus property, approval of additional financial institutions and advisors, special event permit Royal Oak Pride, 360 event productions, request to schedule new sidewalk review of 2022 sidewalk improvement program, standard resolution to special assessment paving in Parkdale Avenue, renewal of license agreement for GIS software library, request to fill vacancy, request to approve extension to downtown social district, approval of tentative agreement firefighters local 431, approval of 2022 Oakland County West Nile Virus Fund Program grant, historical commission recommendation for approval of the Orson Star House Museum ghost tours, approval of Grant Park lease agreement renewal, approval of agreement for Winter Blast Local Fiscal Recovery Fund Distribution Oakland County and City of Royal Oak, and receiving file the non-action items, which are the Police Department 2021 Annual Report. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Motion by Commissioner Macy. Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Hunt? All right. Discussion on the consent agenda. All right. With none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. This brings us to L. Commissioner Douglas?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And I just want to, I understand what this says, but I want to make sure that we approach it in a way that is illuminating. This is a proposal to amend the city's fence ordinance. As a member of the Planning Commission, I've been following this along over, actually, probably a couple of years. And so I'm very happy, there are some finite problems that need to be addressed by this. And I just want reassurance from the city attorney and the Community Development Department that when we are presented with this for consideration, there are pictures. Because reading the language and trying to decide what the apex point is for the sign and the sightlines and so forth hurt my head, and it's going to hurt other people's heads also. So I'm just looking for that reassurance before I move approval of this item.
Mr. Twain?
Mayor, members of the commission, absolutely. We can do illustrations when the city attorney's format and presentation for first reading occurs. We'd be happy to do illustrations. I think you're familiar from the Planning Commission and CBA meetings, where we did provide those and the discussion item, but it would be simple to add those to this item.
I was confident that that was the case. Anything else, Mr. Liao?
I'll ensure that there's pictures available for this commission.
Great. Thank you. Then I approve, move to approve this agenda item.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dubac. Discussion? No, just good thought. It gets complicated quick, and I think people like me, especially our visual learners, so it's probably safe. Individual people, many hours of consternation having pictures in there that illustrate the ordinance, so good call. All right. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. Commissioner Macy. Approval of Centennial Commons Maintenance Funding Agreement.
Thanks, Mayor. So this is about, I should probably, Mr. Ling again, maybe? This is about getting the downtown, our downtown park to have some of those hanging baskets that we've seen all around the rest of our city in the spring and summer, and have a contractor who's worry-free to take care of them, and I'm excited about that idea. I think it's great. However, when I was looking at the agreement, the math doesn't quite add up to me. However, when I was looking at the agreement, the math doesn't quite add up to me, so I just wanted to check on that. It looked like the contract with Worry Free is $30,000 and the DDA will have that contract. And then the proposal is that we give the DDA $50,000 for that $30,000 contract. And I understand that the $50,000 that we're receiving from Henry Ford Health System as a sponsor of the park has to go entirely towards the park maintenance, but it feels like there's gonna be more maintenance that we're gonna have to do than just those hanging baskets. So I'd like to make sure that we have that $20,000 spent on something else and not just moved off the top. So I don't know if that's Mr. Twain or someone else, but throw that up there.
There's two items in this regard. The DDA's current contract with Worry Free expires in November, so there will be a negotiated new contract if it's extended past that. I just bring that up for reference. The actual maintenance part for Worry Free is the mowing, the debris pickup and weed, weeding the, the planter areas. And then in addition to that, there's a one-time expense to buy the hanging baskets, the, the arms that hold the hanging baskets and those sorts of things, as well as the materials to plant in those. And you're correct, that, that, that portion for what Worry Free would do for this summer is roughly the $30,000, the two items added together. In addition to that, the DPS department actually charges the DDA for anything they do in the downtown. So if they come down and change a light fixture or trim bushes, trim, not bushes, but trim the trees or do other things, they're actually charging the DDA for that time. And rather than trying to track their time spent in Centennial Park, was at least my thought initially that for this first year, until we got a handle on what actual maintenance expenses might be involved, that it simply be a pass-through amount rather than spending a lot of time tracking it. Going forward, the DDA would also get charged for the snow removal of the sidewalks in, in Centennial Commons. So again, that varies from year to year based on how much snow we get. So rather than trying to track those things all separately, given that it was a small dollar amount, the DDA would simply be taking over the, the maintenance activities of this area. So outside of the Worry Free contract, there are, there are maintenance charges that occur in the downtown.
Okay. So I think I understand what you're saying is that you, rather than trying to figure out what that is, you're just gonna let them have the $20,000.
Right.
And I understand your point of view on this. I was sort of thinking the opposite, that if we give them $50,000 for what is a $30,000 contract, next year they're gonna come back and say, "Okay, we need that $50,000 again, plus we had to end up paying all this money out to DPS, so we're gonna need more than that." But I, I guess you're saying we're, we're gonna be looking at that closely in terms of how much they actually are charging and how much we're spending on that maintenance, that part. Because I meant, there's this, there's supposed to be a splash pad that's gonna be operational there and I know that's not free to maintain. There's just a lot of things that are happening in that park. We mentioned the snow removal too. And I've just, I guess my worry is that this $50,000 being assigned specifically to this $30,000 contract without mentioning the rest of it makes me feel like they're gonna come back for the rest of that as well. And I'm just checking that with you.
No, my understanding, the only dollar amount is the $50,000 pass-through. Anything that's above and beyond that, the DDA would cover as they do with, with other charges that occur in the downtown. So it was more likely that the DDA would actually be paying more than the total $50,000 than, because they're gonna cover the difference in the, in the CBD.
Yeah.
Okay. That sounds good.
Well, I just, that's, that's generally what, how it would work and my concern was, was the DDA would say, "Well, we're not gonna take care of Central Commons and you can take care of it with just the $50,000." And then we have two contractors in the downtown doing different work and it, it just, it seems simple.
You said two things. You said, "First of all, they definitely are gonna have to take care of it." And now you're saying, "But I was worried they weren't gonna take care of it and tell us we had to." Which one of those is?
Well, but again, it's, DPS is not gonna be the one that's doing the work in this area.
Right.
You're gonna hire a separate contractor to maintain the park.
Okay.
So, Mr. Twain, what I understand is the DDA is essentially the general contractor that's gonna take care of everything there. They're probably gonna exceed the $50,000, but we know that all $50,000 of this will be applied to Centennial Commons maintenance, plus whatever they need to put in.
And if that's not the case going forward, the way it reopens is every time that the Worry Free contract reopens, the commission would have a bite at the apple to either continue to provide the $50,000 or to do something different.
Okay. Good. Commissioner Duba?
Thank you, Mayor. Could you just clarify again, how would we know if that's not the case? Are they gonna, they're gonna provide receipts for hours spent in Centennial Commons?
Well, deep, as far as how we would know that the case is obviously Worry Free is gonna charge their time to it. Anything above and beyond the, the normal time, I would see and be able to track. If, if we're gonna track DPS's time charging to the park, then they'd have to do that and provide it.
Okay. So we can't assess if the $50,000 is all really going where we want it to be going? We'll be able to, we'll have a record of that. We can assess it next time around.
And that will vary from, I'm gonna guess, the way it varies right now with the snow removal throughout the downtown, I guess we don't have much of a charge, there's not much of a pass-through to the, the DDA. If there's a lot of snow removal from the sidewalks, I'm not talking polling the streets, but from sidewalks, it could be fairly significant. The other part DPS does is they come and trim trees. That's again, fluctuates. One year it's higher than others, you know, emptying the trash barrels, they do part of that as well as it's done by the waste hall or on some of the occasions. So all of those things, until we get a handle on how much time's being spent there, I, it was gonna be easier to just simply do it a pass-through, but as I talked with Mr. Laal, if the city commission's uncomfortable with that, you could do it as a not-to-exceed number. And we'll do it as a not-to-exceed number.
Commissioner Colo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I had an opportunity to talk to Mr. Twain about this today. And, you know, this year I'd be comfortable with that $50,000 pass-through. I think it's reasonable that we need to maintain this great new park. And the tax revenue of the Henry Ford building hasn't hit the DDA rules yet this year. So there's, there's gonna be great increase in their taxes that they are able to collect on their millage, that building's downtown and fully taxed, even though there's a false narrative out there, that's not, it is a fully taxed building. So if that money's coming in, I think the DDA will be able to maintain the park with that money in the future. And we can potentially use some of this money where, like Commissioner Macy or Mayor of Works and Macy pointed out, we had the splash pad turning on. We found out last year at Norby Oaks that costs money. To maintain, things go wrong. Something will go wrong with the splash pad this year. Let's just all face that now, but we'll fix it quickly like we always do. So having that money reserved to use to enhance and maintain that park, I think is good, but I'm okay this year at that pass-through with understanding that, you know, let's talk about this. Let's be prepared for next year.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
So you're going to move item L formally on the cons, or item M formally consent, or formally on the consent agenda?
Sure.
Okay. We have motion by Commissioner Colo. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Perush? Okay. Any discussion? Commissioner Macy?
Just real quick, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote in favor of this motion, but I guess I have this feeling that every time we approve a contract and we're saying, "Don't worry, they're probably not gonna spend it all," or "If they do, we'll certainly know about it." It always happens that they do spend it all and then they come back asking for more the next year. So I'm gonna be looking at the business carefully again next year to see exactly where this money's been spent. I have other ideas about what we could do to improve the maintenance of downtown park and I wanna make sure that's being taken care of and this money is going where it's supposed to go.
Any other discussion? I put, I put trust in Tim right now for the $20,000 and the contract and knowing that there's gonna be ebbs and flows. And this is our first full year with the park and we'll kinda understand, you know, what the expenses were predicted, which ones weren't, and circle back next year and all of that stuff's available. They're keeping track of it. So whatever we need, whatever any commissioner wants to take a look at it, we'll have it there. And it will come up next year. Perfect. All right. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. Well, this brings us to item eight.
No, it doesn't. No, it doesn't.
Oh, no, it doesn't? We just did L and M, right?
7.5, 7.5.
Oh, 7.5, you're right.
No mo. For the B-tweens that aren't here.
All right. We're gonna approve Larry and Curly, but no mo, right? No, I'm just kidding. All right. So we have, we have a lot, we have 7.5. You're absolutely right, which is the no-mo May discussion that Commissioner Macy.
Oh, I get it now. What's the difference you're talking about?
I just thought that was your normal look of disappointment in me.
No, no. I was just confused.
I feel a bit better.
You know, I'm very visual, so I see mo, it's with the W. So this was something that the B-tweens, who are the ones who brought to us the B-City USA Resolution to make Royal Oak a B-city. There's a lot of things that you can do over the course of the year to make the city more pollinator-friendly. And one of the things that we had talked about previously was this no-mo May. So other cities have done this. It's during the month of May when it's early pollinator season, a lot of them are still nesting and have not come out yet. And it is the early season when not a lot of our flowers have, our native flowers have started to bloom yet, that there's not a lot of opportunities for those pollinators to have somewhere, have something to feed on. So, day lines, which have gotten a very bad rap here in the U.S. in favor of our perfectly manicured lawns, are actually great early food for those pollinators, as are a lot of the other things that are coming up right now. And so letting the lawns grow a little bit longer rather than kind of cutting them short, which has them a very neat look to them, but is not excessively friendly to pollinators, is something that some cities have allowed residents to do. Usually there's an ordinance in place like we have here about the height of the, how high grass can grow before the city can take action on it. And so I see Mr. Craig is here and the code enforcement, the actual ordinance says that we, the DP, we won't send DPS to cut it until June 1st, but that's, that's in terms of like the city itself going around and like making, taking a look at it. If someone were to complain right now to the code enforcement, they would in fact send, right, and you would send a letter out, right, if someone does?
Mr. Craig?
Sort of shook his head.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. So it, it's a violation right now.
Okay.
The, the June 1st date is, is the date for a notice requirement. So what the ordinance says is, is if we place a publication in a paper in, in the month of March, which we did, then we can cut after June 1st without any notice.
Okay.
And even in April and May, it's still a violation. So we would just have to send a letter, give 10 days and then, and then we would cut. That would be our standard practice right now.
Okay. I got it. So, so June 1st, June 1st, no notice required, city can just come if they see it's, it's excessive, they, they can mow it themselves instead of taking, I don't think we actually do that very much, do we?
So our, our normal practice is to, to wait until closer to July before we actually don't give notice and we just cut. We have some chronic offenders who we might tag their door and say, "You got two days, we're gonna cut it." Because they've known for the last 10 years that they need to cut their grass and they just don't. But yeah, in general, if somebody's on vacation in June, we send them a letter, "Hey, please cut your grass," and then we'll come out and take care of it in two weeks if they don't. We try to work with people, especially through June when it still can be wet and you still can be dealing with some things. But by the middle of July, it's time to
It's time.
Cut it, yeah. So, so we're a little less leaning in July. That answers your question.
Okay. And so my understanding, Mr. Craig, is that if this commission were to say, "Let's, let's take a pause this May on issuing new citations and see how it works, and there's only a couple of weeks left in May this year, and then we can examine how you think it goes, how residents think it goes, and make a decision about whether or not we wanna do any kind of permanent modification going forward," that you'd be, that you're amenable to that?
I, I work for you guys if you guys say, "Don't enforce this." I don't enforce it. It's pretty easy.
So, so the idea would be not to say that Royal Oak is telling people not to mow their lawn or insisting that they don't mow their lawn, but that residents can make their own decisions about their lawns. For instance, we in fact had to mow our lawn this last week because it was getting quite tall and pretty soon our electric mower was not going to handle it. So I think people need to make smart decisions about in fact what their lawn looks like and whether or not it's going to be helping the pollinators to let it grow or whether or not they're just taking a break from lawn mowing. But in any case, that's sort of the balance we're gonna be looking at toward, over the next three weeks. And this is just, would just be a trial period to see what we think and, you know, it doesn't seem to me that there's any great harm in, in allowing this to happen. And I think there are little signs, which Judy designed and could be available here at City Hall for purchase. People could put those up to better inform residents, like it's not just that I've gone on vacation and doing this on purpose and we could spread the word about no-mo May. And hopefully we'll also move towards getting some of those native plants in there that will replace some of those pieces of lawn in the long term.
So, so my question's a little bit more logistically and operationally that maybe Mr. Craig and Commissioner Macy can answer. So I understand our ordinance, the June 1st cutoff. I'm just thinking practically, you know, May 31st, you know, all the lawns are grown, May 31st comes, then, you know, how do folks, like then does a new clock start ticking to say like, on June 1st, if you're one on the run or somebody complains or whatever, do you get a notice? And how does that work? And then also part B to that question is, just like you said, if it gets so tall, you got an issue where you can't cut it with your mower and you need some help or whatever, how does that whole cycle work? And I guess people just wouldn't do it the next year, you know, if it was too problematic. But walk me through those operational concerns.
Okay. So the second one, I mean, residents are gonna have to be smart about it. Like that's part of why we're not, we're not saying, "Don't mow your lawn." We're saying you are allowed to let your lawn grow without having, having to worry about a ticket or having them come to mow it for this month of May. But absolutely, there will be issues if everyone decides to not let their lawn, to not mow their lawn and then it gets two feet high, we'll probably decide not to do this in the future. In terms of the first one, I may let Mr. Craig answer. My guess would be that on June 1st is when you can start saying, "Okay, my neighbor's 10 feet high grass is bothering me," and then that, a ticket would be issued. But not that it would be, I'm guessing you wouldn't go immediately to the no-notice cutting, but I'll let you answer.
So we generally don't ticket for tall grass. It is, it is a ticketable offense, but we generally don't. But yeah, the, the, the letters would start going out in June. We, we would wait till June to send letters and say, "Hey, cut your grass, you have 10 days."
Okay.
"Please cut your grass."
Okay. So they have, they have, it's not like, "Hey, it's May 31st, I was out of town on a work trip," and then June 1st, it's like, dude.
Send out an army of mowers, try to take it out. No, no, we would start sending out notices first week of June to let people know, "Hey, it's time to cut your grass."
Okay.
10 days is the time period we would generally give people and then we send it to DPS. They cut it when they get a chance, if you end up on the list. So, I mean, you could be three weeks before.
And likely people are gonna stretch it as long as they can until it gets to the point where they're like, you know, like people do with their hair, with their beard. They just kinda let it go as long as they can. Eventually they have to say, you know, a neighbor calls.
And then they go behind it.
And then they go behind it.
Their spouse may chase them around the house with scissors, you know, one of those
Mr. Craig, if I call about the mayor's hair, is there something?
It's not eight inches yet.
That's not covering the ordinance.
All right, well, I think it's cool. I wish my neighbor didn't cut my grass as a courtesy already.
Yeah, that's nice.
Yeah. I let him borrow my electric lawnmower, he loves it, can't wait to use it. It's like my second dad. Commissioner Douglas, I see your hand, or is that?
No.
Oh, you're, okay, Commissioner Purush?
Just for logistics, do we need some kind of an official vote saying this is what our policy is for this year, or is this enough, just the discussion? Paul is, Mr. Craig is shaking his head yes.
Well, good evening, Mayor Fournier and members of the city commission. I, I think for sake of backing up this, even though it's an interim policy, yes, for the meeting minutes and to enumerate the, the action of the commission, rather than just an understanding, because it's, what, what I fear is that if there is a, you know, if someone contests a ticket, then, then the, you know, we need to give something to Mr. Craig to be able to back this up. So that would be my recommendation, but I would defer to the, the city attorney on the legalities of this.
I would agree for that reason, and also separately, in case somebody, somebody, an owner of property who's letting their grass and weeds grow tall, they get complained about. One of the first questions asked by the complainant is, show me where it says in the code that this is permitted. So that would give Mr. Craig the, the room to be able to answer that this was a decision by the city commission.
Yeah, I was just going to say it gives them cover to say, hey, look, I understand you have a complaint, you know, and here are the orders that I have, you know, from the city commission, you know, be patient.
I will do my best to defend it if, if somebody complains and just explain it's a, it's a couple more weeks and try and hold those off. But yeah, that would be my concern is that the people who are complaining about the tall grass, not liking and understanding that. But I can, I can do my best to explain where we're at, and I think it's a short timeframe, so shouldn't be too big of a deal. But I would like a vote, if you're asking me.
He doesn't want to be stung by complaints. All right, Commissioner Macy?
So we'll send the B-teens to talk to people who are, they're very persuasive. I'd like to move approval of a resolution recommending that code enforcement take a pause on the enforcement of the long grass on residential properties for the month of May 2022.
Perfect, we have motion, we have a second, we have a second by Commissioner Cola. Discussion, Commissioner Dubat?
Thank you, Mayor, just assuming that along with this, the city would then be communicating that in some way, whether on our social media channels, if we were participating in this.
Judy's on it.
All right, thank you.
All right. Commissioner Cola?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mayor Fournier and Macy, for, you know, bringing this to our attention. I just wanted to thank the B-teens too, when they're watching this. This is a fabulous idea, it's amazing. Now, once again, these young kids are like really, not even kids, these young leaders are really, you know, showing us the future here. I, I saw another city doing this about three weeks ago and thought to myself, man, it's too late to do this this year here in Royal Oak, but maybe we can do it next year. So thank you to them for that reminder, that's never too late to start taking action on a climate, on how to improve it, as you're about to hear from the EAB. So thank you to those kids, those leaders for pushing us forward tonight.
Anybody else? All righty, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. All right. High five, team. We got no mo May, we'll try it out. We still have May. It's just no mo May, got to say it without the R and E. All right. We are on to the next agenda item, which is item eight, presentation of the Sustainability Climate Action Plan, otherwise known as SCAP. We had great introduction during public comment from the EAB, and we have Julie Lyons-Burker here, from a city point of view, who has led this effort and worked with staff electeds and EAB alike, and we're going to hand it over to you, Lyons-Burker.
All right, great. So I am so excited to be here, bringing the SCAP to finally, yes, indeed, it has been a long time coming, right? Because you heard about 2020?
Thank you, is that better?
Yeah.
Okay, so we heard about 2020, but really, we started talking about this in 2019. Your strategy, goals and objectives had a sustainability plan there. And shortly after that was created, we earned the opportunity to file for the Bank of America and U.S. Green Building Council grant to be one of 15 cities across the country to work on earning the Lead for Cities designation. So all of this really started in early 2019 and has flowed this far. We've earned a number of grants related to sustainability to help pay for some of these projects, and now we have a formal guidebook draft to present to you. So now we'll get started for real. Okay, so thank you, Mayor Fournier and city commission members, for your ongoing leadership and support of sustainability initiatives. On behalf of the city manager's office, the Royal Oak Environmental Advisory Board, and a myriad of stakeholders who volunteered to help us develop the plan, I'm really happy to present to you a resolution to adopt the city's first sustainability and climate action plan. We refer to this as the SCAP going forward in this presentation to save time. So first, we'd like to offer a very high-level presentation about the plan. And to start, let's have a quick overview of the city's pathway to developing the plan. First, there was leadership buy-in, that's been going on for a long time. Multiple commissioners have been sustainability proponents for years, and Mayor Fournier has signed a number of national climate commitment pledges over the years. After that, we worked on a formal commitment. In July of 2020, the Royal Oak City Commission adopted a climate emergency resolution and tasked staff with completing a greenhouse gas inventory for the community. After that, we finished the greenhouse gas inventory, one for the whole community and one for the municipal operations only, so that we could determine the difference and work on both pieces. That was done in September of 2020, and it was based on 2018 data. The next item is to identify the goals. We have two overarching goals. Once we had that emissions data, we came up with greenhouse gas emissions reduction goals, and they were adopted by the commission in January of 2021. Those goals are 40% reduction by 2030 from the 2018 baseline and net zero by 2050. The second goal for the plan was taken from the 2021, 2022 city commission adopted goals and objectives and desires to incorporate the three pillars of sustainability within the community, the people, the planet, and the prosperity. So after we identified goals, then we were able to start the development of the plan. And I won't read all of these, but we moved forward through creating a staff or a task force, the SCAP task force, made up of four EAB members, two planning commission members, and two staff. We engaged in a lot of community engagement work, including an online kickoff, because we were right in the heart of COVID at that point, a community-wide survey, pop-up events at the farmer's market, meetings with local organizations. And then the biggest piece of community engagement opportunity there was the 24 work group meetings. There were 24 because we did four meetings each for six of our focus topics. And we had about 75 volunteer participants in those meetings. Once the data and the priority actions were collected, brainstormed and collected from the stakeholder meetings, the task force took all of that information back and synthesized it to create the first draft of the SCAP. That was put out for public comment in the middle of March for a little bit more than two weeks. And once we got the public comment back, we incorporated that, and the second draft is here, and this is where we are, presenting the second draft to you as commissioners for review and adoption. So how this plan is designed, there are six sections. The first is the introduction, and it gives a little bit of background about the city, about sustainability, and why action is important. The second section is the current status, so it's like the where are we as a city? The third is going forward, like where do we want to be? And then the fourth is the action steps, and that's over the next three years, where all of the actions are listed in tables. And that's really the what we're going to do. The next section, section five, is the strategies for accomplishing, so the implementation, and that is how we're going to do it. And then we have an appendices with some acronym definitions, a glossary, and some other resources for readers. I mentioned that we had six focus topics. You could see them there on the outer ring of this image, building, energy in buildings, mobility, waste, water, green space, quality of life. All of the work that we did to bring priority actions together are revolving around those six topics. This, so section four is really the core of the plan. It spells out the priority actions in those topics, and these actions, again, were developed and prioritized by the community feedback in survey responses and the stakeholder work group meetings. The work groups scored all of their brainstormed actions and then listed them in top choice numerical order. And from that, we were able to put together the tables, the action tables in section four. So what made it into these action tables of the plan are the highest priorities according to the community feedback and the high probability of feasibility with staff departments who would be in charge of these. So here's a screenshot of the energy in buildings action table, just to give you a quick view of, of what they look like. In the plan, we have 126 actions in the six focus topics, but 28 of them are already ongoing or in progress. So the remaining actions are anticipated to be feasible within the plan's three-year period by the relevant departments, either completing those or at least getting them started in the first three years. So some are capital improvement projects, but many are less complex, like the city providing access to educational sessions and enhanced communication efforts. Convening beneficial partnerships for the implementation of these actions and for community stakeholders will also be part of our implementation efforts. Just to give a quick understanding, here are a few of the actions in each focus topic. By the way, the double asterisks that you see there indicates that these were the highest scoring priorities in the community-wide stakeholder survey. We had a question that said, list your top three priorities you want the city to work on in each of those focus topics, and these are the ones that rose to the top. So just, for example, in energy and buildings, one of the high-scoring actions was to improve municipal buildings and streetlights' energy efficiency. One in mobility was to convert the fleet to EVs or other alternative vehicles as, alternative fuel vehicles as appropriate, and participate in safe routes to schools and parks. In waste, it was develop educational recycling, composting programs. And water, replace lead service lines and educate and implement about water conservation measures. Green space, develop community-wide education and outreach programming, and provide options for green space stewardship and volunteerism in parks. And for quality of life, educate about civic engagement and local decision-making opportunities, and create a human rights commission. So those are just a few that you'll find inside of this plan. Some of the benefits of having an SCAP in place are, now we have a guiding document going forward. We can use it to help improve the environment, to use resources more efficiently, promote smart economic development, and create more inclusive community, lay the groundwork for major investments, which leads to the second bolded benefit, which is funding opportunities, like grants and partnerships throughout the region. It really positions us as a shovel-ready organization for sustainability grant funding, and helps us build additional partnerships in the community and region around these pieces. So, and that leads to the third one, which is visibility as a regional sustainability leader. And I know that I've heard that before, that, you know, that is one of our overarching goals, is to be a leader here. And that certainly can help us build regional collaboration opportunities and catalyze connections with other peer cities. And then think about building collaborations with other cities to earn group grants or foundation funding for really big projects for the region. So lots of benefits here. The next slide, I wanted to just highlight this piece, and in the box on the right with the asterisk, it shows that, again, in that stakeholder survey, the respondents scored their top three. This item scored as a top three priority at 68.3%, that the sustainability and climate action plan strategies really need to be embedded within the work that we do going forward. So when we're updating future planning documents, like the master plan, the five-year perks and rec plan, the capital improvement plan, and budget planning, and, and any others, we need to embed all of this kind of information and make sure, like one of the public commenters said, that we have departments talking to each other, so we get these things meshed, you know, in our programming going forward. So, let's see, that's slide 10 of 10. So that's a quick overview of the plan, and I'd like to give a heartfelt acknowledgement to my colleagues on the SCAP task force and all of the city of Royal Oak stakeholders who offered their time filling out our long survey, and visited the pop-up feed, of feedback tables at the farmer's market, and of course, those who participated in the 24 work group meetings. We couldn't have done it without you. And earlier tonight, I counted eight of them here, but I think they were not, you know, as robust as some of us here, staying the whole time. So anyway, again, we couldn't have done it without all of the volunteers. And so, Mr. Mayor and city commissioners, thank you for allowing us the time on the agenda to present to you. We invite your questions and ask that you adopt the resolution tied to this plan. I'd like to call a few of my SCAP task force colleagues to join me for questions up to the podium, Dr. Herzog, Paul Vial, Woody Gantina, and Ann Bieke, please. And we'll open up for questions, if you have any.
All right, questions, excellent presentation, excellent work.
Thank you.
No questions? Oh, Commissioner Dubat?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for this amazing presentation, for all the work that has gone into this. It has indeed been a long time coming. You know, you'll put in years of research and hundreds of hours, both volunteer time and staff time, and I think we have an excellent product here. More to say about it, but I do have a couple of questions. We've talked a little bit, you know, in EAB, about how there's only so much the city can do on its own, right? We want to achieve this goal, but so much, you know, only so much of our emissions come from city operations, the overwhelming majority coming from private residential property and businesses. Are there specific recommendations included in here, in addition to public education, but that, you know, policies that we can drive that can help residents and empower residents and businesses to be a part of this effort and do what we can do, you know, in our individual properties, in our individual lives? Can you speak to that a little bit?
So yeah, there are a number of actions in the plan that speak to policy advocacy that we need to be taking part of as, as Royal Oak. And many of those speak to partnering and collaborating with other surrounding cities to kind of generate that larger voice. But depending on which one of the work groups you're speaking of, there's definitely policy advocacy items that are in these action items that will, that are intended to facilitate the individual resident's ability to be successful in some of these actions on their own.
And I think this was mentioned a little bit, and this actually might be more for the city manager. Now that we have this plan in hand, hopefully it's adopted tonight, we're about to go into budget conversations. Has there been any discussion on, on the plan informing this year's budget? Is there time for the plan, low-hanging fruit to inform this year's budget conversations?
Yes, to all of the questions. So you have before you the proposed spending plan, the budget for the 22, 23 fiscal year, and there was a number of items that came up through the capital improvement plan, as well as the, and the operations that Ms. Julian Lyons-Burker that had identified. Additionally, we have also applied for grants that have been made available, especially the, the grant-making process through the, the federal government has changed in that there are, what they refer to as earmarks. Previously, we would apply to respective federal agencies. Now we submit a proposal to our respective representatives to consider direct appropriations. So those are considered earmarks. And as she alluded to, and Ms. Lyons-Burker in her presentation, this gives us added credibility by having this in the plan, that we can include that in the, in the grant application. But specifically to, to answer your question on the implementation, that yes, that is baked into the system as part of the budget. More important item in implementing the plan, that I've spoken to the EAB, is changing the culture of the organization. Because we can talk all we want, but until that becomes ingrained in, in our thought process, decisions that we make, proposals that we present to the commission, that part is key to making this work. What we don't want to do is three years go by and we say, oh my gosh, what have we done? And, and we're behind the eight ball there. So that, that is the, the commitment that's coming from my office to further this. And, and so you will see individual items that are referenced in the, the budget document that, that point directly back to the plan. Our other bite at the apple, if you will, is that as we're going to be implementing the spending plan, is that we have this very, very unique opportunity called the American Rescue Plan Act. And that calls for implementing, especially the, the larger projects, the, the infrastructure, whether it's solar implementation, there's any number of those that are included in there, that we've identified that as, as part of the preliminary ARPA plan. So, yes. So yes, that is something that the wheels are turning and how can we implement this? And at the same time, like parting thought on this is that we can't manage this if we don't measure it. So that part is important, and I think that goes back to the plan itself. It doesn't specifically identify a timeframe. We talk about a three-year period, but yet, you know, I think if we divvy this up over a reasonable period of time of not making this overwhelming that we're in the third year and, oh, gosh, we got to catch up. So it gave me a long-minted response, but yes, the spending and the culture are two important components to make this successful.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Break. And I guess I would just...
Yeah, I just want to follow up on that briefly from the standpoint of certainly from a budget standpoint, there's going to be the need for additional sources of funding to accomplish a lot of the major goals. But one of the things that this plan, having it in front of us, does allow us the ability to do is analyze our current budget expenditures and perhaps be able to allocate those more effectively when it comes to actually accomplishing some of the goals that are in this plan. So I don't, you know, the fact or the question about how are we going to pay for these things always comes up. I just want to make sure that everyone understands that we certainly can pay for a lot of these things right now within our current budgets if we have a better understanding of how to spend that budget, which is what this plan gives us.
And I think that's an excellent point, that we've seen from staff over the years is we've really been trying to build a culture of sustainability, more and more projects coming forward as staff come up with them. And I think we've seen it from the engineering department in particular, where there was initially, you know, years ago, resistance, and now more and more projects trying to incorporate more green space and more, you know, green stormwater runoff. And what you have done is exactly what Mr. Break is saying, is really give us a roadmap where we can change the culture and now staff have a place they can start and not kind of have one-off ideas like, oh, maybe this is something that the commission's really going to respond to, but a real predetermined strategy on how we move forward. And that's what we've been missing. And I'm just, I'm really excited about moving forward with this. You had something to say?
I just wanted to add one point, because being on the planning commission and having had the opportunity to look at the capital improvement plan, again, we're a community that's well-funded. We're going to have the village going back out of a road funding, and this is one of those opportunities that I think needs to be across pollination, across thinking that it's not just about the roads, it's rather about, again, it's our mobility and accessibility, and so is that it's our roads, our bike access, and I don't mean bike lanes, old school, '70s mistake, mistake in the '70s, but proper protected biking areas as well as the sidewalks, I think should be incorporated into the same funding because it's about all the people having different kinds of access at different times, and so that's one example of that. And I believe, again, with our current funding, there's a lot of opportunity, there's more need and there's ARP and there's other things, but we need to think each road design, each space design, even our sidewalk ordinance should be cross-referenced with our trees because we shouldn't be putting sidewalks in and killing the trees. All of those things kind of go together. So just that whole looking at everything through the sustainability lens, I think, will help in term of moving or changing that mindset.
Well, thank you all very much, and particularly thank you, Ms. Lyonsberger, for...
Thank you.
Your tireless work on this front and leadership internally and with the EAB. This wouldn't have happened without you, and I think we all greatly appreciate that. I'll see if my colleagues have any other questions.
Yeah, I just want to echo one point both the city manager and Commissioner Dubb made about, you know, this being part of our DNA moving forward. And change is hard. It's hard for all of us, and changing how we've done things for three months or 30 years is always going to be a challenge. And I think the importance of this plan really puts it into the forefront where, you know, environmental sustainability, S-CAP, is not just a consideration, but it's a guiding light north star. It's something that is in the forefront of our dialogue, not as an afterthought. And I think that's going to be a critical change, and it's like psychological change that we have to have both up here when it comes to funding these things, but also for city staff. And I think, you know, we talk about accountability, we just don't need to have a list of things that we've done. I think we also have to challenge ourselves to look at the things that we didn't do and why not. And I think that's a big part of this equation moving forward, not just bragging about, oh, we put some bioswales in or we put solar panels up. All of that is amazing and good. We also have to keep track of the missed opportunities to hold ourselves accountable to our north star. But this is amazing work. So Commissioner Colo and then Commissioner Macy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll echo everything that's been said. I mean, thank you to you all. I mean, this has been such a long process and, you know, even though it seems long, you guys also did this very quickly. I mean, it's, we saw a problem and you guys acted on it, so thank you all for that. So, you know, looking through this amazingly long and complex document, I guess I want to go back to what Mr. Break was saying about tracking this. I know, Mr. Break, we talked about this for the budget and goals and objectives of the city this year that I believe is in Vizio software. Do you see this being incorporated into any type of performance tracking mechanism so we can really take, you know, that 10,000-foot view of where we are with this in a given time?
In some shape or form, I would say of having a dashboard where you could quickly look at the information to see where you're at and the progress that we're making. So that Vizio, that's an example. It doesn't mean that it will be them, but there's other proprietary programs that are pretty similar to that. But yes, to answer your question, I think that's a way of, you know, and would help us even from a staff perspective to look at that on a frequent basis of where we're at and where we need to be.
Okay. And do you think that's something, you know, this is, once again, a hundred and some pages, do you think this is something we could implement this year still in this next budget year to start to get that dashboard at least designed and version one of it up? Because I do worry that we have so many goals that if we don't get that dashboard, they get lost. And I don't, each one of these is just as far as the last one, make sure that we have a way of tracking that. Short answer is yes. Okay. I'm going to ask you for a long answer one day. So I won't make a motion to approve this because I think Commissioner Dubb would tackle me after the meeting if I did that and he couldn't. So I look forward to the rest of the conversation.
We have a motion on the table.
No, I said I won't.
Oh, you won't? Okay. I was like, I'm confused by that. Okay. All right, good. Glad I still spoke with confusion. You don't. Okay, Commissioner Macy.
Yeah, so, you know, same as everyone else, this is a lot of work. I mean, just, yes. The list of action items and it's pretty impressive the way this all came together over the course of it. I'm partial to green space, Go Green Space Committee, but...
Go green. Did we hear you say Go Green?
You did this one time. So I, I mean, this is really impressive, but I share the concerns that have been mentioned here already about making sure that now that we have this document, that it doesn't get filed away and, you know, three years from now, we look at it and think, ooh, we didn't get anything done. And I, what I guess what I'm warning you is in terms of, I'm afraid that if it's not in the budget, it doesn't get done, or we don't have something earmarked for it, or don't have a grant that we're looking for, it doesn't get done. So in this, in the list of department potential partners for this, who has ownership of this? So like install EV chargers at appropriate municipal facilities. Who's got the ball to make sure that we take action on that within the next three years?
Your city manager.
So all billion of these items are you're responsible for?
No, no, but my response to that is like any other project that we do, it takes a team. And so the rest of the administrators and that drills down into a number of individuals, will I be getting into that nth level of detail? No. But as far as responsibility in that regard, as we go through this process, it's learning and adapting. And as we can set aside whether there's a dedicated revenue source that is implementing this, but we do have a team that has the ability and the capacity to implement. Now, there may be, here's my word of caution to this, that as we found that there's things that come up, the here and now issues that burn bright on our list, and there may be items that we need to carry forward. So I don't want to give anyone the misimpression that, oh, absolutely every single item will be done in three years. There has to be a pretty reasonable beginning to implement that, and some of these will take many, many years to put forward. But it needs to be continuous dedication that we chip away at this. It's kind of like that old adage, how do you eat an elephant? You eat one bite at a time. And so this will take some time. But to say, I think what you're asking is, well, there would be one person that this are. No, there's not. But I'm giving you my assurance as the city manager of working with the department heads that we implement the program. And what holds us accountable, what, going back to the comment that Commissioner Colo brought up, is that by having that dashboard to say where are we at with these items, and that'll be an indicator of what's been done, what needs to be done. But there are many items that, referring back to Ms. Lyonsberger's presentation, that she refers to as low-hanging fruit and items that are easy to implement. One of the, the EAB invited me to speak a couple of months ago, and one item that I advised that the group is that, and I'll say this here, that we should take the time to celebrate. And when we can accomplish these simple items, and again, that ingrains in that culture. And so there's many items that we can check off that list and say, all right, we're off to a great start. And that will build that momentum to move that forward. So again, this is the thought process to implement this. Read the budget document.
Well, that's exactly my next question. So I've got this budget document here for the first time today. How many bites of the elephant, elephant and low-hanging fruit am I going to see in this document?
You will see items in the transmittal letter. We'll be talking about that in the capital improvements plan. Tell you what, you're helping me refine my PowerPoint presentation most expensive time just on that alone. That'll say, refer to page 226 that says this. But no, I think part of, here's the tricky part, is that we have a complex financial system. It's a $200 million budget, 39 operating funds that funds the 360 full-time employees. Part of the trick that Ms. Lyonsberger and myself have to go through is all these very complicated documents and to point the dots and to say, this is how this works within the system. And we will show you how that is carried out, and that will be part of the budget presentation. But honestly, I think you're asking a very good question as it relates to this. How are we doing this? And how does that relate to the spending plan? And we'll cover that, but it looks like Ms. Lyonsberger would like to perhaps add an additional statement.
Sure. I have an addition to that. So the actions that you see in the tables were all, all of the departments were talked to about each of these. So the tables were longer when we started, and the question we had for the responsible departments were, do you think realistically that this is feasible to either do or at least get started within three years? And if the answer was no, and it still was a priority action, it went to the back page of things, other considerations on page 92 and 93. And so we went through every one of these, and then we went back and talked again to each of the department, the responsible people in those departments and said, okay, so now we're thinking about budgeting. This budget time coming up, which of these do you think you're going to have to get started in '22, '23? And have you considered that in your budget? And so these conversations were had. So certainly, all of these will not be starting in fiscal year '22, '23, but the ones that are have been considered. So just off the top of my head, in the budget, you'll probably see some money for EV charging stations. Another thing that is rising to the top is about municipal buildings' efficiency and perhaps streetlights' conversion to LEDs. And so those things, even though some of those projects are big, we see a lot of opportunities for either grant funding or a very quick payback. And so that's sort of how this is playing, like we really have looked at all of those things. And so I would say for '22, '23, the departments that we talked to, you know, the responsible parties have, that have considered those.
Great. Thank you.
So what I understand, just to recap that understanding, is we have a list of tasks, those that's obviously been bought in from the public and from staff, and that there's a management plan where you, like anything else, once this resolution is passed here, that you'll distribute the work, make sure it's getting done, and ultimately, the buck stops with you as far as if there are open items or things that aren't getting done, you manage that with your staff or come back for help or relief here to get the things moving.
That is correct.
Okay. And the EAB will have an opportunity, I imagine, to have some check-ins to see, you know, on a regular basis where we're at with things and, you know, help offer advice if we need a little extra encouragement, because there's so many things going on all the time, you know what I mean? And I mean that sincerely. There's, you know, there's the things that we just kind of keep the rail cars on the tracks, and then there's, you know, just shiny things that we get distracted with, and then there are real serious things, police matters, things like that. So with your support, we can also make sure that everybody's staying on track.
Can I sit down?
Pardon me?
Can I sit down, probably?
Oh, yeah, you guys don't have to stand up. I feel bad.
I was just going to say, I would hope the EAB continues to...
Yeah, I know. Just so I give that extra assurance to Commissioner Macy that we got a whole crew of people that are willing to stand for the S-CAP.
Don't pass out.
Commissioner Purush.
As everyone else has said, this is a phenomenal piece of work. But one of I think, one of the most important things that you pointed out in a general sense was how this plan is going to have to be integrated with other planning processes that we're going to be doing going forward, like the master plan and like the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Have you thought about how you're going to start that process or keep that integration working? Because we're all sitting here and we're now familiar with it to the extent that we've, you know, been paying attention to it. But the master plan, for the most part, is conducted by the Plan Commission, the Planning Commission. Parks and Recreation Master Plan is going to be done by the Parks and Recreation and Seniors Board. It'll come back here, but I'm curious as to how, aside from Ann, who's on both, how we're going to keep those processes integrated so that this plan does become a component of the master plan and the Parks and Recreation Master Plan and capital improvement, that's Planning Commission as well.
So two of our S-CAP task force members belong on the Planning Commission also, so there's a connection there. It's Woody Gantina and Ann Bieke. And then one of, the other staff is Erin Filipski, the Director of DPS and Parks and Rec. And so that is our connection for the Parks and Rec Plan. So I think, you know, in general, we have these connections that we're starting to make, but your point is not lost on us, that we really need to understand, you know, how we actually embed these things. And I'm not sure, maybe Woody or Ann can speak to this about whether when the planning, RFP went out for the master plan, if sustainability was incorporated into, you know, what the companies, you know, wrote about or incorporated into, you know, their draft plan.
It was certainly discussed, the Planning Commission. I'll also offer up that I think communication is probably the key, and this is sort of the first step in that path. All the different departments, all the major documents that get produced going forward now have the fortune of knowing that the S-CAP exists and the understanding is that, you know, the expectation is to incorporate that into all those major documents. So sustainability certainly was a driver of the RFP that went out for the master plan update that's coming up. I think we all have a responsibility as leaders to make sure that we continue to communicate the fact that sustainability goals as laid out in the S-CAP need to permeate all of the major updates to any ordinances that we do.
And I just want to add too that, that's what I was trying to say in my remarks is that I, oh, sorry. I speak the... And so building relationships, that's going to be an ongoing thing for the EAB and for us leaders to make those connections. I'm an Oakland County Parks and Recreation Commissioner, and I'm already reaching out to the park and recreation to talk about the S-CAP and try to foster those relationships so that this is embedded in that. But it's going to be a long time relationship building. We need to talk to the business community and really engage them as well in this process.
And I'll add, one thing is I think also as we move forward, again, as you said with the planning, excuse me, the master plan, when we hire the consultant to make sure that they're aware of not only this plan, but other things that are in place currently, like the water work and some of the other studies that have been done, trees, the 2017 study, I think is quite relevant. So that we're making sure that they're going to start with some of that information, and I would think that the parks plan would do the same thing to point out that these are key documents that they have to refer to enroll in as they start their process and educate themselves about where we are to make sure that they tie in.
And just, this doesn't really go into the other plans, but we were trying to get it out into the community. And so we had an Earth Day event that really put us on the map for Oakland County, saying that we're a leader and we're... that we're a leader and we're here, other 62 communities, to help you also implement the plan, because it can't just be Royal Oak having a plan. It needs to be all of the county, then other counties and states. So we're here to build those partnerships and find opportunities where we can all work together.
How wildly successful was that Earth Day event?
Very successful. So I think we had 200 to 250 people marching, and over the entire day, about 1,000 people came down to Royal Oak.
Wow. Any other questions? Commissioner Duba?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all for the presentation and the excellent discussion and all your amazing work. With the understanding, as the city manager has laid out, that, you know, this is going to be an ongoing effort. But I do want to be clear, and that the motion I'm making is not just adopt to the plan, but clear direction that we shall be making regular progress and taking substantive action with every decision we make on executing elements at this point. And that it is not just a reference guide or something we could dusty on a shelf, but a guiding document for this city for real strategic action to make a meaningful difference to address climate change. So with that, I will move for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Duba. Second by Commissioner Cold. Alright, discussion.
I'll just say, I think it was Mr. Wright, a public comment, that really nailed it. The work is now just beginning. This has been the cool part, the fun part, you know, mapping it out. You know, designing the house is always the fun part, and then, you know, figuring out how to build it is always going to be the challenge. But, you know, I will say, I have the highest confidence in the EAB, highest confidence in staff. And if you go to the beginning of the draft report, you can see of all the names and people that have participated in this, I don't, I don't see, you know, sort of this objectionable cause that sometimes we see, unfortunately, when it comes to protecting our future. And, you know, we have very qualified people. I'm very bullish and optimistic that we're gonna, we're gonna work together to get this done. But I'm also a realist that we're going to have some headwinds and challenges, but we've solved lots of problems in this community before. And as long as, like Commissioner Duba said, it's not just a document that we put on a shelf, but we live by it, for all the right reasons, we're going to be successful. And the most important thing is, you know, how do we inspire other communities to do this? Because we'll do our small part in our four corners, but how do we make those four corners bigger, wider, longer? And I think we can do that with the team we've got put in place right now. So I'm excited, I'm bullish. But, we've got to hold each other accountable. Alright, with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Alright.
So where's the electric charger for the car?
Give a second here. I think we're at item nine, which is the proposed amendment to special event permit, Jonathan Witsen Associates Arts Beats and Eats. I think we'll open this up with Chief Moore.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Jonathan Witsen Associates has requested to amend the existing Arts Beats and Eats special event permit. Specifically, they're requesting to add a cannabis sales and consumption area to the existing event, beginning this year. The Police Department has had discussions with Mr. Wits and his team about these proposals. And I just want to lay out exactly how those discussions have went. Mr. Wits is proposing to add this sales and consumption area in the alley between South Center Street and Washington Avenue, between Sixth Street and Seventh Street. And that map is labeled Attachment 1 in your packets. The organizer will seek a temporary marijuana event license from the state of Michigan. And this proposed area would be surrounded by fencing that obscures any view from the street level. The area would also have a designated entrance and exit, and that would be staffed by private security. And only those 21 years of age and older would be permitted to enter this area. The Police Department researched this proposed amendment in great length and discovered that there have been seven of these licenses issued in the state of Michigan. The Police Department also contacted law enforcement agency leaders in these locations just to get some feedback and details on how these events occur. Predominantly, the events were held in city parks, and they were either one or two-day events. And the attendance at these events was estimated to be between 500 and 2,000 people total. The events consisted of local live music, sales and consumption of cannabis, and various other vendors in the footprints as well. These events only permitted cannabis, as alcohol was not allowed at these events. There were no major incidents reported at any of these events, and the most notable issue appeared to be traffic congestion and parking issues. And after careful consideration, the Police Department is opposed to this request. The addition of the cannabis sales and consumption area to an event of this magnitude and scope hasn't occurred anywhere else. Out of the law enforcement officials that I personally spoke with, most, if not all of them, expressed concern with what is before you tonight. In discussions, the organizer has expressed that this is the 25th year of this event, so I believe some of the musical acts and attractions are geared towards making it an anniversary event, again, adding to the overall attendance. Arts Beats and Eats is a family event, and it does contain a kid's zone and several carnival areas. Concern is, despite using fans, the odor of burnt marijuana is a concern, as well as the location, which is near the carnival zones. Another concern is police protection within the footprint area. The strong odor, again, of the marijuana, as well as the secondhand smoke risks associated with that, makes detailing police officers inside the area difficult. So that task of monitoring and checking identification, as well as protecting the products in the festival, or in the secure area, managing any sort of unruly behavior, if there were any, and really making sure patrons don't leave that area, would fall on security and not police personnel. I consulted with regulatory agents from both the Michigan, excuse me, the Marijuana Regulatory Agency, as well as the Michigan Liquor Control Commission. And they both confirmed that each of the substances would have to remain in their own area. And what I mean by that is alcohol could not enter the cannabis consumption area, and cannabis could not enter the alcohol area. So there would have to be staffed on both sides to make sure there is no co-mingling of the substances. There's another part to my report tonight. When I completed this report, some of the outreach pieces were not tackled by the organizer, but I have since learned that that may have changed. So I'll hold off if Mr. Wits wants to address those. And for those reasons that I've laid out, the Police Department is opposed to this request. So just let you know, Mr. Wits and his team are here tonight, and I'd be happy to take questions or whenever you'd like to speak to him.
We have questions for Chief Moore. Commissioner Duba.
One question, Chief, and maybe this might be for the city attorney. We got a lot of amateur legal advice at public comment. I'm just curious, according to ordinance and state law, is this even a proper request under our ordinance and under state law for us to consider?
I believe it is, but I would defer to the city attorney for that.
Commissioner Duba and Mayor and Commissioners, there is a provision in the ordinance that was cited earlier in chapter 435 by one of the members of the public comment. And, you know, they've read just a portion of that ordinance provision. It's embedded in 435-2C, which, it's a second sentence in that provision. It's a little awkwardly written, it's not very clear. And so, but I think the intent for that, because, well, I'll read the provision, no marijuana establishments are allowed, nor shall a municipal license be considered or granted for those activities and facilities defined as a special license, being a state license described under certain sections, including for not limited to marijuana event organizers and temporary marijuana events. Now, the, the problem with, with this provision, interpreted that this somehow prevents special licenses from being even considered, well, one, it's inconsistent with your zoning ordinance, which does prohibit temporary events, marijuana events, in all zoning districts unless the City Commission decides to grant such a, such a request under chapter 435. So those provisions are inconsistent. I think what was meant back then, and I was not here when this ordinance was drafted, was that there was a concern about marijuana establishments, which are defined under city ordinance and state law, which provide for, or actually describe establishments of more permanent nature. Marijuana temporary events are found in a separate section under state law, same chapter but separate section, and it's not a permanent establishment. Plus, municipal licenses and our ordinances are only granted to marijuana establishments. So to me, the, that reinforces the intent of this provision, was that the, the city and the commission were concerned that marijuana establishments would, as part of their establishment facilities, their permanent facilities, would somehow start having these marijuana temporary events associated with their, with their premises. And I think that's what the ordinance really addresses. It does not address a, a situation that Mr. Wits and Arts Beats and Eats are trying to create, to have actual temporary, either it's under state regulations, one to seven days event, as, as part of a larger event. I think that's, or independent of any other event. And so I think the correct reading of this provision, contrary to what was mentioned during public comment, is it's not flat out prohibited. It is basically, it's not allowed in connection with a permanent establishment, such as the ones that you all approved at your last meetings.
Thank you. That actually sounds familiar. I remember, because I was there. We had a lengthy discussion about special events, of whether or not we wanted to allow for them to be licensed. And we determined, so long as we had crafted so that they had to go through our event request process, get a recommendation from the department, and come to this body, that we were willing to consider that. That is my remembrance of that conversation. So if there needs to be clarification, our ordinance, fine. But I'm sure that was the intent of the body when we enacted our marijuana ordinance. That being said, Chief, I think you make some, some solid points. So to your knowledge, you saw our festival brings 250,000 to 300,000 people through in a weekend?
Yeah, I would say, I would defer to Mr. Wits, but I would say somewhere between 300,000 and upwards on, when, when there's great weather and things, that attendance could be higher than that.
So to your knowledge, under our, our new state law that allows for, you know, marijuana events and consumption, has there been an event of this size and scale that has incorporated marijuana retail sales and consumption as part of the event?
No, nothing even close to the, the total attendance for these events. And the, the main distinction is, these events haven't had both substances there. So another concern is, if somebody has consumed alcohol, we have ways of knowing how much they've consumed by giving them a PBT or breathalyzer. One of the concerns is, there isn't a way to know how much someone has consumed, as far as cannabis, and how much THC is in their system. So to be able to go from one area to the other area, and possibly back to the other area, it hasn't happened anywhere yet, and that's, that's a concern for public safety.
Alright, thanks, Chief.
Commissioner Cold.
Chief, were any arrests made last year that you know of for consumption or possession of marijuana at the event?
I don't, I don't have that in front of me. I know the arrests numbers were, were low last year, but I don't want to give you an answer on that. I don't have it in front of me.
So it's not a statistic that typically stands out, though, that there's a high, high amount, though, so you could think off the top of your head?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, because I just know walking around, that's, pot's there. So I was just wondering about that. Thank you.
Commissioner Purush.
This is a question for the chief as well. You've talked about the private security operation and them being essentially in charge of enforcement and dealing with issues and so on within the consumption area. Are you, are you saying that that's, that that's absolute, that if there is some kind of disturbance or something, that, that ROPD would not, would not go in because of the, you know, the potential, you know, issues because of exposure? I guess I'm trying to get a sense, I'm very uncomfortable with delegating a whole lot of law enforcement responsibilities to a private company. I'm very uncomfortable with that. But I'm trying to get a sense from you as to where you all would, would draw the line in terms of, you know, saying, we've got to go in.
Sure. My reasoning on that, or thought process, is I don't want to assign police officers detail to that area. One, I don't want a police officer smelling like burnt marijuana. And I don't want that secondhand exposure risk. But obviously, if something was communicated, or there was a disturbance, or we were alerted that there was some sort of emergency, or something that needed police attention, then obviously, we, we would respond and handle whatever occurred inside. But as, as just a typical detail, I wouldn't be comfortable putting police officers in there the entire time.
Okay. And this is a related question. This is probably not a fair question, but have you also had discussions with the fire department in terms of their EMS response to an incident that might occur within that area? I'm assuming they would have the same general concerns. They're not going to be stationed in there, they would be doing emergency response. But have you had any discussions with them at all about this? Has anybody done, had any discussions with them at all about this?
Not specifics on that, but with past practice and how we operate together at these events, I would imagine if there was a medical emergency inside the area, police personnel or a combination of us and security would bring that person outside for treatment, outside of that area, due to the same concerns.
Okay. My guess is that both of your departments have gone into situations up until now where it's obvious that someone has been consuming marijuana, just by the smoke and the fumes and the smell and stuff inside. So it's not like you guys are never exposed to it.
Correct.
It's just, it's just a potential of, of a lot more exposure here.
Exactly.
Okay. Alright, those are my only questions so far.
Anybody else? Oh, Commissioner Macy.
Yeah, thanks. So, I understand, I understand and share the concerns about the smells and the secondhand smoke. I want to understand a little more about the safety concerns, like, so, you know, it says, there's grave concerns about adding cannabis, and there's the talk about cannabis and the alcohol. And, you know, I sort of, as a gut reaction, understand what you're saying, but consumption of cannabis is no longer illegal, just like consumption of alcohol isn't illegal. So what's the, what is the safety concern that we have about the ability for people to access both of these at this festival, that we don't have on a daily basis about people's ability to access those things in their own home?
Well, I think the main concern is just the access to both substances. And granted, at these events, you will smell cannabis here or there in the crowds and things. But I think the amount of individuals that would consume cannabis because it's readily available at the event, maybe to try it out or things like that, and then leave that area, and then be able to consume alcohol. And when those two substances are competing over the course of the open hours of the festival, that's where the concern comes from.
Okay. And so, if the concern is that people will consume both, and then what? And then what's the, what's the concern?
I think if, if you're consuming both substances, the chances of some sort of disorderly conduct, or the chances of that would escalate, I think, if you're combining both substances in that setting.
Okay. So, yeah, that's what I'm trying to get, that's what I'm trying to get down to, because we haven't, we haven't seen, you know, these other events have all been cannabis only. I think one can only assume that probably some of those people did have alcohol before or after, perhaps during. But this, that's the, what I'm understanding to be your concern about this, is that both of these will be present at this large festival, and people who may not otherwise be consuming both of these together may do that here and then become unruly.
Sure, that's, that's one potential. And I think really, one of the concerns is the number of individuals that are at the event already, and just adding another option for folks, that has the potential to escalate behavior. And I think it, it hasn't been tried that has the potential to escalate behavior. And I think it hasn't been tried anywhere close on this scale, nowhere that any of the research showed. You know, as I stated before, you know, roughly 500 to 2,000 people were at this, and we're basically taking a well-established festival with tremendously large crowds, and then adding this component to it. And that just hasn't been tried anywhere yet. And it gives law enforcement officials some concern.
Okay. And do you have information about the capacity of, I mean, not all 400,000 are going to be in the tent at one time. Is there, what's the limits of what that looks like? Do you know? Maybe that's a question for Mr. Witz.
Mr. Witz, I believe, has the square footage of the proposed area. I don't have it in front of me. And I don't believe the fire marshal actually worked out a capacity for that area either.
Okay. I mean, I'm just, I'm thinking 10 years from now, there's no way that we're going to be able to deny that people are going to be consuming both of these substances at Arts Beats and Eats. And so we're starting where we are now, where that hasn't been allowed in the past. And then 10 years from now, we're going to see that. And I definitely understand the concerns that you're raising. I tend to see a little bit, what I'm seeing is that the idea of a cannabis-only event seems riskier to me, in my mind, than a well-established event where this is just a tiny piece of it. Like, we know the rest of this is going to go well. We've had experience with it many times. So I'm trying to, I'm looking at your point of view, that this is adding on top of something that's really big, as opposed to my point of view, which is, this is just a small part of something that we already know works. And maybe this is the way to test it out. But I'm seeing what you're saying about the, kind of the combination, what your concerns are with that. And I guess I should ask, you probably don't know about the smell containment, because that's a concern that I have too, the smell and the secondhand smoke.
During our discussions, Mr. Witz had indicated he's researched some fan systems, and I don't want to steal his thunder. I know he's got a presentation tonight and wants to speak to that, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much, Chief.
Mr. Collo.
Thank you, Ms. Ware. Chief, can you talk about your powers during an event? If there's an issue with this area, what can you do if it's, you know, if it's approved here tonight, and you get there on day one, and it's just not working?
Well, like with all the special events, if I determine that there is an issue, or an area, or a particular function with the event that's unsafe, then built right into the special event is, I can shut down a portion of the festival, certain gates, certain areas, or anywhere where it's deemed not safe. For instance, the cannabis area could be shut down during the event.
Okay. And if maybe you feel completely huffing on you at the support of this commission to do that at any time, right?
Was that a question?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry. Yes. You'd feel comfortable doing that? You'd feel comfortable shutting down an area if you had to?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. I do know we have a, the petitioner has a presentation, a brief presentation, Mr. Witz. Are you ready to present that now? So we learn a little bit more about some of the details?
Is that a directive?
What's that?
Was brief the directive?
Somebody at this table has a conference call at 0600 hours. I'm not going to tell you who, but.
Okay.
So thank you very much for allowing me to be here. And I want to start by just saying a word to Chief Moore, who I've had the chance to work with for a long time. I have the utmost respect for you and have worked together so closely. And part of the reason why, you know, we have had such success is because of your work and your team's work and attendance. It's been great, and none of that will change based on this evening. And, you know, appreciate the chance to be here. I'm going to try and run through this quickly, since some of the stuff was addressed. And I start with, I want to introduce Mike DeLore from the House of Dank, who is on my left. And he will say hi. I'm going to bring him up for a question in a minute. Mike, I'll go into their support in a second. What I'll say about the area, it's completely enclosed. I'll answer the capacity. We're figuring 362 people capacity. 112 in the consumption area. It's 18 by 100. We could adjust that in little directions either way. And then 250 in the sales area. It's bordered by 7th and 6th Street in the alley, and it goes partially into the parking lot of the apartments at 617 Washington. There's some examples of signage. That's the back of the tent that would face Washington. And then that's what an entrance would look like on the bottom. You could see, but you can't see through it, or we'll ensure that all those areas are tight. There'll be, you know, black material, you know, throughout that scaffold treatment. The chief went through a lot of the key points, 21-plus, access enclosed. You know, I just want to say, when we talk about participation, this area would take approximately 1% of the festival grounds. The private security presence covered by the event would be a minimum of four or five to a maximum of six. We would have people managing the line to get in. And I just want to make a comment about private security. And I think the chief would agree that, you know, that private security has worked closely with police. They manage what people bring into the festival. They protect us from people bringing in the wrong things. Our private security manages the railroad tracks, you know, there. So private security has played important functions at a high level at the event, and they work closely with the police and called when needed. We don't anticipate any issues in this area, which is, again, not only a symbol of what the area represents, but also of the history of the festival and our patrons. The activation in the consumption area would be open air, and there would be an industrial fan every nine by 12, 16 industrial fans that are run quietly, whose purpose would be to suck the air up. And our estimate is it would go up 100 feet and then continue to dissipate. I can't speak to exactly what happens on certain wind conditions, but the purpose of this area would be to send this up. And smoke rises naturally, that I do know from a chemistry perspective. One of the key things that we mentioned, and I have some maps that I wanted to hand out, Jennifer?
Right on the chair.
Oh, they're on the chair. We couldn't put this in the PowerPoint. This part of the area, there would be, is there just one map or there are two?
This.
Just speak. So this is not in the PowerPoint, but I'll just show it up for, I don't know where the camera hits, but there it is. Our goal, to help mitigate secondhand smoke, and we feel that secondhand cigarette smoke is as much of a, or more of an issue to people's health than burnt marijuana that would only be taking place in 1% of our event. Our goal to show the city that we would truly mitigate a health hazard is to make 85% of the festival non-smoking. I am not claiming we would be successful in all areas of this, but we would have volunteers politely asking people about this. And we would put a real focus in the actual kids' areas. That's where we would man people. When you're waiting in line, and someone's smoking, and you have, you're waiting with your child to get an elephant ear, and that smoke, there's nothing you can do about it. And that is what we really think we can do to offset any danger. And this was a suggestion of someone on this body, and it was an actual real thoughtful one, because we don't know the exact science on it. So we put an effort into place to raise the air up. But then more importantly, we will put hand-to-hand ground combat on something that is so unhealthy, which is secondhand smoke. And we will limit that area to when you're watching music at the main stage, where it can't be enforced, on Center Street, on 5th Street, by the bars and restaurants. You could smoke there. You could smoke by the alternative stage in Washington. There'd be a smoking area in the art fair, in the grass area behind it, but not where the artists are. So when you're buying a piece of art, and someone inconsiderably walks next to you with a cigarette going, you know, we will be asking them to not do it because of the large crowds. And again, I'm not claiming that we're going to, you know, have full success here. But my thought is, in the kids' area, we'll be 85% successful, and in other areas, we'll be 30 to 40% successful, all of which will crush the amount of, you know, the 112 people, if capacity would be in the smoking area. So we are concerned, you know, about it. And, you know, we would be taking steps. And I've talked to volunteer organizations that are willing to work different blocks, and love the idea of, you know, politely asking people. And I've spoken with the chief, and it's not going to be an enforcement issue. We're not going to ask the police to ask anyone to leave if they're smoking. We're just going to work from a common sense perspective and appeal to those that are considerate. And at Arts Beats and Eats, a lot of people are considerate. And so I'll put myself behind that. So I mentioned that. I also would mention there were no schools in operation during the period of activation. It's my understanding of that statute, that that statute was for, you know, schools that were on a permanent, you know, were permanent dispensaries were, and schools in session on a year-round basis. There would be no schools at St. Mary's. I verified that with them and with St. Paul's. No school will be going on. And there are also going to be no public advertising of this area. We are not changing this in our public advertising. I see Local 4 here tonight. The commercials on Local 4 would say, you know, just what they normally say, art, music, food, who are the bands, all of that. It would not be advertised on TV, radio, or print. Additional stakeholder support, chief, I want to thank you for allowing me to make that clarification on that. The business and residents who we surveyed, who are actually adjacent to the event, are in support. The property management of the apartments at 617 Washington have sent an email with no opposition. I've spoken to their residents. I have an email from one on the phone. Cody Kalella, who has spoken, who does not work at the festival, has spoken to the four tenants in the building. And I can share that with the clerk. I don't want to look it up on my phone right now. The property management team at Center Street Apartments, which was referenced in the report, have no oppositions or concerns with the area. And 100% of the people that were surveyed had no issues with it. And that survey was handed over to the commission. The owner of the Oak Street Deli and Rocket Printing, adjacent to the area, have no opposition or concerns with the area. And that is next to the area. And that email was forwarded to city administration. And I've spoken with the owner of Oak City Grill, which would be directly across from the street, and they have no opposition as well. And that would be Kevin, the owner. Contributions from the cannabis sponsor. The House of Dank invested in a major activation in 2021. It was received so well. It was a heavy investment. I don't want to give out the total financials, but it was a six-figure-plus investment into a shipping container, music, entertainment. It was highly, well, it was well-received by our patrons. The area was full. And there was not one complaint on social media that we had that area in, at our event. It was promoted, and we did not hear from families, or did not hear concerns that, you know, we had a cannabis sponsor that was on site. The House of Dank is making a big contribution to the event. They're our second highest supporter. I think it says fourth, but they have become our second. Support allows the, their support allows the event to maintain high quality of entertainment and operation, which is critical when industries like the auto industry is offered reduced support. And again, we're trying to change too. I know we talked about change and stay ahead of the curve on stakeholder support. So for example, five years ago, the auto industry support of Arts Beats and Eats was a quarter million dollars. In 2019, it dipped to 40,000. And that's something that we've been able to keep the quality of what we're doing by this support. And we, again, there are other industries that I don't want to share the names of the companies, but I will tell you, communications has had a merger of three companies that's seen 2/3 reduction in their support. We've had our health insurance reduce. Another partner has reduced. And again, I don't want to share, share names publicly, but, you know, we are trying to battle, in the midst of inflation, trying to stay ahead of the curve of getting the support of companies that are in a position to invest in the event. In this trial year, the House of Dank will contribute a minimum of 7,500 versus 7.5% of sales to, as a designated Royal Oak nonprofit. We are putting out the Royal Oak Civic Fund as one possible suggestion, but that would be chosen by the commission. And projected revenues from that could be in the 15,000 to 30,000 range. And we would ask that this is for the trial year, and, you know, make sure that this is satisfactory to continue, that a number is not sustainable with the investment that's already made between the activation activities, the sponsorship fee that is paid, the staff that's required, that is not a sustainable amount. But it's been elevated to support, you know, the fact that this is the first year, and to show how it goes, and put something, you know, on the line. I'm not going to restate the chief's report on the cannabis events. Just want to say that, again, the fact that there was no incident there speaks to the fact that there, the folks that are engaging in the product, you know, are not prone for incidents or issues. And I'm going to save some comment on that toward the end, but I'm trying to fly through this for the 6:00 AM call. The attendance, I just want to reference the attendance. Our record attendance was in 2010. We haven't gotten close to since then. And to give everyone an idea about 2021, we had the best factors in place for our best year. We had coming out of COVID. We had perfect weather. We eliminated the one concern that we've had from our patrons. And we listened to folks, and that was the food and beverage tickets. We did get a lot of complaints about that. We eliminated our food and beverage tickets. That drove a great response. And then our music lineup was increased by a third. So we invested heavily into the event last year, and the crowds were manageable, but it turned out to be our fourth-largest event attendance-wise. What you would see is people stayed longer. There was a longer length of stay because of the weather and how people felt about the event and the tickets. My reason in bringing this up is that I don't know how this particular attraction, not being advertised, not being a major band or music artist, would affect our attendance. And then I would ask the question, if it did have an impact or some incremental increase in the attendance, that is what we're asked to do. We are asked to make the biggest event possible. I'm asked by so many stakeholders, how is this event going to get bigger, better, more people, et cetera? I would not say that this would be the specific thing, but we are built, and I have the confidence in our ability and the police's ability to handle, you know, big crowds. We, that's what we do, and that's what we're striving for. And we've always been encouraged to do that. And I don't see this 362-person area as a reason, other than the fact that it's a novelty, and it'll get reported on. I just think it's an experience that's being offered to a consumer that would be interested in this. Should a family event have a hidden cannabis area? And again, most of the people that spoke to you today could not make the distinction between alcohol and cannabis, because it's a legal product. Cannabis carries a stigma that you all are aware of, that is, you know, being broken down. And people see people consuming alcohol. 600 half-barrels of beer are consumed at our event, just at our event, not count, counting what is consumed in the bars and restaurants. 750 cases of liquor are consumed at our event. Again, lots of people, almost all responsible, some not. Adult decisions are being made. People have the right to go to the Soaring Eagle Casino after the event and drink. They can take a voucher that they are given, and they could gamble. Most gamble responsibly. Some do not. And that is part, people have the ability to bring cannabis into the event. It is not restricted. It is not checked for. It is not, we don't go into people's pockets for it. And it goes on, and people will consume. And it's just something that exists. And I don't see, the way we have presented our event, that having an event that's completely hidden and out of view of people, just because they know it's there, compares to what people see, not only from alcohol, opportunity to gamble, as I said, promoting that, and then actual cigarette smoking itself, which is in front of everybody, which we are actually trying to decrease. The fact that it's never been done before, I actually, and I emailed this to the chief earlier, we actually found an event that is very significant in size in San Francisco called Outside Lands. They have had a cannabis area, and they have major bans from Green Day to Lizzo, to Post Malone, Malone, to other events, and they have alcohol sales and cannabis at the event. And I couldn't find it till, I was talking to somebody about this in my house, and my son said, Dad, what are you talking about? I was at this event last year in San Francisco. And I proceeded to look it up, and and I look at one of the stories that came out. I mean, it's titled, "This Area Stays Cleaner-Chiller Than the Rest of the Festival." And then there was a comment from the story. Shoot. Well, I will find it. Okay. Well, I will find it and catch that in a second. But I do want to pass these around, John, if we can. Yeah, yes. Oh, my goodness. Well, I circled an area that was referenced. Oh, here it is. "But most importantly, for future events, there were no incidents requiring police or medical attention all weekend long in the Grasslands area. Alcohol was not allowed, and security were on orders to not admit anyone into the cannabis section if they exhibited signs of intoxication." This is a story quoted that's being handed out to you. And the other thing I just want to say about being the first is that I don't think there's an event in the region that could, as the chief pointed out, there's not an event in the region that could give us comfort specifically at Art's Beats and Eats. If one event did it and their crowd was small, and there were no problems, or an event did it that was big and had a music artist that, you know, might have drawn a crowd, that was more of a challenge, you know, that it wouldn't be fair either way. We are the best ones to try this, and that's why the beauty of this is it is only four days. And the last thing I just want to say about Grasslands, the demographic is much tougher than Art's Beats and Eats. It's a younger, concert-oriented, party demographic. We are not that demographic. We have some of that element, but the music there is geared 21 to 31. I specifically, we specifically avoid that demographic in our music booking, as many of you know. All right. So, and then the concerns, you know, from other departments, I mentioned a couple of those earlier, just the fact that we have dealt with a lot of concerns at at our event. We've dealt with the gun controversy over time that we've managed well. We've dealt with the railroad track issues. We deal with lots of people, and I think we can get there. So why should we be allowed to do this? I mentioned, I'll skip through this quickly. I mentioned that we're looking for the future, you know, the sponsor climate challenges, the inflation climate, and I think this is a cool thing to offer. I mentioned the events. Oh, there's two events in Michigan that just got approved for the, for beer, for consumption of cannabis and alcohol. One is Smoke at the Water in Manistee, Michigan. That's new and approved by their city commission on April 5th. I just found that out today. And then the Hoxeville Festival in Wellston is new and recently approved. They were approved on on April 20. And there's an article in the Metro Times that I believe that we can pass out that also shows. I'm sorry? We can share it afterwards, yes. Okay. But there's an article that that's there. "The Art's Beats and Eats JWA team has a proven track record of producing safe, successful events in Royal Oak. Cannabis events in general have a low occurrence of problems. Art's Beats and Eats has a low occurrence of problems and issues with no major incidents, not just in Royal Oak, but in Pontiac too. We've, we've carried that, we've carried that along." Almost done. "The event is only four days, so this area is not permanent. We're asking for only a one-year commitment on a trial basis. The event will raise money for local nonprofits. Cannabis is legal. Cannabis will be featured." Okay, we already did that. "Response to other concerns. We've heard, will this change our brand? Our advertising won't change. This is less than 1% of the area. People will experience fine artists, nine music stages, 60 restaurants, and family activities. This will not be experienced by the majority or even a small percentage of our crowd. How we keep areas separate? We will have signage, also suggested by someone on this body, with, you know, no smoking of product outside of the area. No, we will, we will not allow folks in the area. We will notify people when they purchase products and, let's see, and we will also have people at the end of the line, in case there are long lines. We will have people asking them to come back. And then we will also speed up the time limit that people can have in the area. So we have the ability to manage interest that. And on the concerns of mixture of alcohol and cannabis, you know, my, my thoughts are, again, people make responsible adult decisions on how they conduct their bodies, and we trust them to do that at Art's Beats and Eats with a tremendous amount of alcohol sales. They have the ability to bring in substances. We are not checking people for that. And, you know, I think the the fact that we have this, the fact that cannabis is available throughout the area, this is not something people need to come to Art's Beats and Eats for. It is just a area to add of a small addition, you know, to the event that, based on our ability to integrate other adult themes, will be done tastefully, discreetly, and responsible, responsibly. We've shown a track record to do that. Response to other, oops, I did that, sorry. My closing thoughts. This is our brand. It has become our brand together. We have a history of care and stewardship of this event. We would be putting everything on the line as well with it, and I'm trying to steward this for the future. I have a time period of how much time I will be stewarding this, you know? I hope it's at least four or five more years. But we want to make sure it's in good financial standing and is able to deliver what everyone has wanted us to deliver. And we have to have the resources to do it. We want to keep the admission price down. We want to keep the the costs reasonable of products. So we feel like this trial is important for our stewardship, our future, our resources. We have an overall peaceful event, and we're adding an activation that would have no specific evidence of affecting it being unpeaceful or not peaceful, sorry. People who use the product are considered, you know, by my experience with people, of either, one, mellower than myself, I'm not a user, or, two, they use the product to become in a more relaxed state. And then my closing thought is just another compliment to the chief. You know, our collaboration with the police department is strong, and based on our historic record, we are confident that this is something we manage together because of, you know, how great the chief and his team are. So that is, that is my presentation. And I wanted, if there was a question on the cannabis state regulation, Mike DeLora from House of Dank could answer that question because you are able to have to-go products leave the area. You just cannot, they just cannot be consumed in the alcohol area. So you have, you are allowed to have products leave. And again, we're not enforcing products coming into the event as it is. So it wouldn't be, you know, the the area would make sense if you couldn't sell products and people could take them home for use, just like they take home artwork, or just like they take home CBD products, or just like they take home anything, you know, that they have. So if there was a question for Mike on that, and there you go, open for questions.
Questions? I see Commissioner Hunt, and then we'll go to Commissioner Macy.
Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Witz. I know you said that Art's Beats and Eats won't advertise this consumption tent, but will the sponsor advertise that, hey, come to Art's Beats and Eats and smoke?
Fair, fair question. I should have been more clear. There will be no, none of our public-paid advertising will be promoting it. Yes, it will be promoted on social channels of House of Dank, and it will be promoted on, it will be mentioned on our social channels. It will not be featured. It'll be rotated probably one post over 30 days that this is happening. And and it's not, it's not a push. The the morning TV segments that you see that we work with with TV stations will have the normal presentation of family activities, music, food. House of Dank as a sponsor will have one of, or two, or three of those over the course of four days that we have. And it will be mentioned, but we'll talk about the Dueling Piano Bar in their activation. We're not, it's not a feature on that. There's many more things that that happened in their activation besides, besides this. But yes, there'll be social, it will be mentioned out there socially.
Now, I know you say you have 16 fans to attempt to eliminate the smell of the burnt marijuana. Will this do anything to eliminate or reduce the effects of the secondhand smoke?
Well, the, it's going to send it 100 feet up. It's, the fans are located nine and a half, the scaffold will be nine and a half feet tall. Someone is in the 5, 5, 5, 6 range. The fans will be sucking air up, and it is the projection of the the company and my operations director is that the the smoke would go 100 feet in the air from the power of those fans. And then it would continue to dissipate in the open air as it travels.
So I don't know if that answered my question. Is there anything that would eliminate the effects of the secondhand smoke? We heard the chief's concerns about, you know, perhaps his men and women going in.
Right. And and again, our, and that is valid, but I I would attest that the way Art's Beats and Eats functions, that there would not be a need unless it was an emergency, no different than in the city of Royal Oak. Our private security will manage that area effectively, and there would only be a need to ask for assistance if there was a major incident or emergency, which is a rare occurrence at the festival. And again, if you take that it's a rare occurrence at the festival and that this area is only 1% of a rare occurrence, you know, that the track record speaks that it's possible that that could happen and would be a short time in the same way if there was an emergency at a home where the product was being served and, you know, the, um, uh, emergency responders would go in there and would, you know, would not stop if there was a problem. But we are 100% confident that we can manage the area, and I think the odds of something happened are isolated and, you know, and, you know, would be not likely to happen. It's, it's possible, though.
And lastly, have you considered limiting the operation hours to times when perhaps kids, more kids would not be, or as many kids would not be at the festival?
That, I think that's a fair question as well. We, you know, there are kids there at all hours of the event. The investment in the area, you know, I think the idea, the fact that there would be a demand to use the area, that we are best managing that area so that it is open as many hours as possible, so people can use it and take the the demand off of use. And again, you cannot, our, you know, you cannot see into the area or know what's happened. And our other adult products are available starting, you know, at 11:00 AM when we open. And and this, in this very small, hidden area, would be open, you know, for the entire time, and we would want to, you know, keep the hours from the hours of the the festival.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Macy, and then Commissioner Douglas.
Thank you. So I want to clarify, chief, if I'm clarifying wrong, you can overclarify me. But, I mean, you were saying about the chief's concern that this would, you know, add to the, add to the crowds at Art's Beats and Eats, which are already substantial. I don't think his concern was that this tent would make more people come, and that was a problem. I think his concern was if it's a, if it's a dedicated event where there's only, you know, 2,000 people who come, it's like, it's a small, controlled environment, whereas this is a place where 400,000 people are going to come either way, and now there's this new, there's this new thing that they may pass through that is going to, it's a larger crowd that isn't coming specifically for this, that might not be making as good, as good adult choices as those people who had specifically chosen to go to a smaller event that was only 2,000. Is that?
Yeah, that's accurate. Thank you for that clarification.
Okay. So that was just one thing I want to say about that. And then, so I just wanted to follow up about the fans and the smoke too. So you said your estimate is that it goes 100 feet in the air, and then, you know, Commissioner Hunt was asking about the secondhand smoke. It feels like somebody should know how to get rid of the smell. I mean, I know someone's public comment said they liked the smell, but everyone else in public comment agreed that it's not the greatest smell. And so there's these fans, like, it sounds good, but someone must know how to get rid of that smell. Do we not have any studies that show, or has this been done somewhere before? I just, the sort of like, we're throwing 16 fans in and it goes up 100 feet, and we think that's good. Does anyone know that's good?
I think that, I don't have a specific, you know, answer. Mike, did you? I mean, I think there's products that are, are, there's a filtering system that are permanent systems in cannabis operations that are tens of thousands of dollars that are available and used in those. But the technology for that, I mean, it's the idea that it is open air, the idea that we are sending the air up, you know, is, and the idea that on a ground level, we're working to eliminate real secondhand smoking danger, you know, is the give and take that we are asking for and and feel is, is, you know, a fair, a fair request.
Okay. My last question, I'm slightly embarrassed to ask, but I'm going to ask anyway. So in the sales area, and then go to the consumption area, is the sales area only the smoking kind of marijuana, or are there edibles being sold there too that could be?
I can take that one. Good evening. My name is Mike DeLora. I am the chief corporate officer and general counsel for House of Dank Holdings. We are the proposed vendor at Art's Beats and Eats for 2022 in this cannabis dedicated space, and we have been a sponsor of Art's Beats and Eats. Both in 2021, we signed a multi-year deal. I also indicate that our founder of House of Dank is a resident of of Royal Oak as well, and he's sorry that he couldn't be here this evening, but he sent me in his steed. Addressing your question specifically, we suggest a very curated menu that we would bring out. It would likely be a couple of pre-rolls, pre-rolled cannabis joints. We would have a small selection of carts, the electronic e-babe cigarettes, and then one or two different flavors of edibles. We think for security and logistics, it is best to keep a very minimal menu for this type of of festival. And again, we are using the model that we have seen work now for, you know, six or seven decades in the alcohol world of keeping a, a very curated model at a festival of this kind, offering a small selection to those consumers that would like to try, and then moving forward from there. But we would offer a small selection of edibles, but it would be a far cry from the thousands of different available products in Michigan's regulated marketplace and at any one of our eight stores.
Okay. I think this was covered already, but they don't have to go to the consumption area. They can go buy and then leave, right?
I, you, you could absolutely. The consumption area would be designed solely for those men and women who would like to purchase usually smokable cannabis in the form of a pre-rolled joint, and then have a safe area where they could do so with like-minded individuals while they're enjoying the festival.
And do you have a way of monitoring consumption in that spot? Like, are you, you know, with alcohol, sometimes we can tell when someone's drunk, and we're like, all right, you've had enough. I mean, is there a way that you monitor the consumption in that area in a similar manner, or is there no way to do that?
Absolutely. I think that we have a very dedicated security team. Again, we have been in business with one of Michigan's largest and oldest cannabis companies. We have been operating in the regulated marketplace since 2015, and have been using Ethos Security for that entire time. So our teams now have seven years of experience in working with this product and with people that are consuming this product. And we have seen some of the signs of perhaps a little overindulgent and where someone may need some water or a little bit of time or otherwise. But we believe that the way that this particular footprint is structured in a very discreet area within an alley that allows for it to be away from the public viewing areas for those men and women who are enjoying the festival that do not want to partake, but also create something that is unique for those men and women that do. This is a novelty. I think that we, we can accept that. And to your question earlier, I think in 10 years, we will look at this as something that, my gosh, I can't believe we were even, we were even talking about this. And having been a cannabis practitioner and businessman now for for several years, I have seen this sort of, the stigma break down as, as, you know, initially, we were worried about the stores being here, and then the smell from the grows that were indoor. And we're seeing that many of these concerns ultimately didn't materialize the way that we thought. And we believe that in an event run as professionally as Mr. Witz runs his event, together with our experience in this industry, that we believe this is the perfect grounds to to try this here in Michigan for the first time and really set the tone and tenor for how to have a successful event and how to introduce cannabis into these mainstream events as we break down the stigmatisms.
I just want to respond, Commissioner Macy, to the, the, one of the areas is the, that there will be a limited time consumption. So unlike your time, ability to drink multiple beers, you know, the time limit in the area is projected in the 20-minute range to allow people to have the experience of doing it. You know, we're not going to be, you know, keeping or allowing folks to stay in the area for a long time. So I think that will be working in our favor as far as overuse.
Okay. That sort of answers my next question, which was, you talked a little bit about long lines, et cetera, and now you're talking about moving them out in 20. So it seems like you're expecting that. So it seems like you're expecting that 112 people will be in this consumption area pretty continuously throughout the festival.
It's, we don't know, but that's the maximum that it would be. And we'd have room for a lineup of 200 people outside is our projection and 250 people in the sales area. The line would be on, start in the alley and curl around on Seventh Street sidewalk. That is an area that is not used very much by patrons because the street is open to walk that area. So that is a perfect place to run a line, you know, to get into the area if there were one. We would station a security guard at the end of the line and if it got past, it got to the point of Washington, we would tell people to come back later and enjoy it at a later time. Just like if a music stage was full or in an area that was full or the festival was full, we would ask people to come back at a different time.
Okay. Then my last question was already asked by Commissioner Hunt about whether or not you had thought about controlling the time period for this, just to make it more of a small bite out of this. And I specifically was thinking about, I can't remember now, it's Thursday before five or something. There's a time that it's free to get in.
Yeah.
And I wondered if, like, and that's when, for instance, my family with three kids likes to go. So I wondered if that was a time that maybe this could be cut off.
Yeah. Friday before five, would you be amenable to? Commissioner, can you hold to that, sir?
We certainly believe that being open and being part of the festival in total is really the best approach to take. We would certainly be willing to consider that type of restriction and naturally it is well within your discretion to put conditions on any special event permit that you were to give out. So if that were the type of condition that you would impose, we would certainly adhere to it. I would push back and perhaps say maybe three, four o'clock on that Friday as people leave for the holiday weekend and want to go out and start to enjoy themselves. Maybe a bit more natural, but again, I would certainly defer to your authority and expertise on this.
So I would say that means yes to five if that was, if that was a concern, if that was a concern.
Commissioner Douglas?
In fact, my question is similar to that of Commissioner Macy's, the question being how you would control admission. It seems to me a few years ago, you had a casino, like people could come in and gamble. How did they gain admission to that activity?
So there was a line that came out and, I mean, there was a relatively steady line. I will just say what's interesting about Commissioner Macy mentioning Friday, that is the time where we have the demand of people that want the Soaring Eagle voucher to go up to the casino. They give out an amazing voucher offer and we have a line that runs down Washington Street, down Washington, that runs probably 300 people long. I don't know if you've ever seen it, but everyone comes for their voucher on Friday because the Soaring Eagles there is doing it. So we have had that kind of line before. In the casino area, there were 50 people at a time. We allowed the 50 people in and then we staged 50 people in line. I just have to, in fairness, and I appreciate the question, we were not quite challenged with the demand that could happen at this event, but we were able to manage it. There were only a few times where we had back-to-back-to-back stuff. We always managed to have 50 people in the tent, but we never had more really than 50 people to play. The first year, maybe there were 75 or 80 people and that was located at Center and Sixth without a street that naturally we can line people up on. So we were able to maneuver a line, you know, through that area and we had no issues with that.
So, but what if you were to use an alternate system, some sort of online sign up or issue people a time slot, you know?
So that's absolutely, that is 100% feasible for anybody waiting in line like they would do at a park to give them a pass to come back at a different time. Absolutely could be done. I don't, per se, when, to see an online sign up for the entire operation, I think would be tricky because there'd be a lot of no-shows and people that come in, but as far as dealing with someone who comes up to line and can't get in or wait in line to hand them a voucher, you know, come back and we'll give you a guaranteed line pass at a certain time, I think that would, that would be a really good way to do it.
Because I would think that eliminating a line on the sidewalk kind of takes attention away from, you know, people wanting to know, hey, what's going on in there? So I guess I would like to see you maybe try to do something to eliminate that visual symbol of what you're doing.
I-
And similarly, you said you would control how long people can stay. How do you do that?
Fair question. I mean, that would be, you know, simply by security and eyeballing it's such a manageable amount of people, especially in the consumption area, that we would keep track of it and move people out in a way. I don't think we have a, I think it's a fair question, but I think the amount of security we have in the small amount of people in there, people have been in there at time and there's a demand to get in that we can say thank you, you know, it's, you know, we're going to give other people a chance to come in there. So that would be on security. I don't think we have a specific, you know, plan for it, but I, it's-
I can actually address that a little bit, just about, you know, again, these are, these would be regulated sales. So any regulated sale of cannabis within the state of Michigan comes with a lot of paper and a lot of computer records that go along with it. So we actually will know precisely how long each and every consumer has been in line, checked in, made their purchase, and then ultimately when they're leaving as well, because we will have all that data as they come through. Again, we are envisioning a system where you are age verified before you enter into the activation. Once there, there is a small lobby area where you are, again, double age verified and then checked into our system so you can then move back and make a sale. At each touch point, you are providing information to our people that is going into our system as well. Now naturally, we are working as hard as we can, both at the stores and certainly at this festival, to move clients and customers through the system as efficiently as we possibly can. So Commissioner Douglas, my gosh, I really hope that we have an unruly line that we have to manage out front. That would be an unmitigated success. In this year, I'm not so sure that we need some of those reserve a spot type crowd management solutions. Perhaps we do in the future and, you know, really from your lips to God's ears, that we could be that busy if you find it in your wisdom to go ahead and grant this for us.
How many people, how many staff people would you have?
We anticipate anywhere from six to eight security at all times during the festival and then another approximately 20 to 30 staff members from age verification to check in to the sales area, to the consumption area. Because there are a number of things at the state level that we have to ensure as well and the number one thing being that we cannot allow other people to be selling products in our activated space. This is a regulated space, it is regulated by the state of Michigan, my license is at stake here. So when we are looking at security, we are looking at not just to ensure a safe and fun environment for everyone there, but one of the priorities that we have for our team is to ensure that anything that is consumed there is a licensed and regulated product that was purchased there, it's been tested, it's been safe. That is something that is tantamount to the state rules and us operating as a continued regulated facility.
And Mike and I have the right to disagree on something and we definitely disagree on one aspect of it. This is a new presentation for us. On the outside of the area, it is especially the responsibility of Arts Beats and Needs. So if, I don't see any reason why we could not, you know, have some type of system that would allow, you know, that we would be responsible to help mitigate the line and return people back, you know, whether it be a car that handed out at a time. So I would, you know, I would pledge, you know, my efforts on figuring out that system, you know, to help mitigate the line and, because I think it makes complete sense that if someone, to me, from a customer service aspect of the festival, if we are responsible for how guests have their enjoyment and we see a line and then coming back, I would love to give them a time that they can come back that we're comfortable and we might tell them that it's sold out on a certain time. Because by what you're saying, if there's a certain amount of people that have been given a pass back for seven o'clock or eight o'clock, we can let them know not to bother coming back in line and that would help alleviate, you know, the problem. What I do agree with Mike on is I think there, I think cannabis is very widely available around here and I don't, I agree with Mike in the sense that I don't see this as being, you know, just a mad dash, you know, at it. But to your point, I think we should be prepared and I think it's a great suggestion that you have my word that I would work to implement for this year.
So then another question. It looks like your attendance there will be like three to one sales versus consumption. That seems, excuse me, like the reverse. It seems like people would buy something quickly and then spend time consuming it.
Right. So I, you know, again, I'm going to let Mike speak to and try and give my interpretation, you know, of that, but the idea is people come to our product and they purchase so much stuff to take home. I mean, it's just part of the event, it's part of the makeup. People take artwork home, they take CBD products, they take t-shirts, they take jewelry, they take, you know, pet novelty gifts. So much stuff is taken home. So it's the idea of having a store, you know, there that, you know, that again, supports an entity that is supporting, you know, the event at a high level. And that is where, again, to the point of if we are able to sell the product in two-thirds of the area, that leads to, you know, a great positive impact, you know, on nonprofits locally and, you know, is the goal of the area. So, you know, people come to Arts Beats and Needs to shop and that, this is, this is no different. This is a place to shop. So, and that would be, that product would be available for sale to take home and that's what I would think a lot of consumers would be doing.
Okay. Thank you.
Did I answer that? Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Macy?
Just know what you just said. Do you have to exit through the consumption area from the sales area?
No.
No. That's all.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, gentlemen, thank you. Mr. Witz, we appreciate it and we'll bring the discussion back to the side of the table, see where the commission goes on this and hopefully you guys are still available for some questions if more pop up. Commissioner Dubb?
All right, we'll get the discussion going here. Okay. So where I'm at. So, you know, Mr. Witz and everyone here knows I love Arts Beats and Needs, I'm a huge fan of the festival, I attend every day with my family, every, I know Mr. Witz is an expert at what he does and he puts on a very well-run, safe event and no one has ever accused me of being the fun police. I'm not a puritan, I fully support it being a cannabis-friendly city and I'm totally open to approving a cannabis-centric event. But Arts Beats and Needs is our banner festival. As Mr. Witz said, our brands are inextricably linked and therefore I think, you know, any significant changes warrant a much greater level of scrutiny and consideration. So where I'm landing on this is I'm not comfortable supporting this request for two main reasons. First is odor. I appreciate the fans will be running, but much like sound, you know, every year, you know, how the air will behave is unpredictable. Some years we get noise complaints from 14 in Maine-
Yeah.
-and other years, you know, it's from a completely different area of the city, just based on how the air is moving and the atmosphere and clouds and things. And I suspect that pervasive odors operate much the same way where our ability to control them is somewhat limited. So, you know, while the festival is certainly beloved by many in the city, including me, it's also, you know, already considered a nuisance by some of its neighbors. And so I don't see why we'd invite another potential issue without pressure testing it first. Second, you know, we have a negative recommendation from our chief and my concern has nothing to do with any of the fear-mongering or pearl-clutching arguments or any of the often blatantly prejudiced reefer madness type things we hear about marijuana use from some folks. But, you know, I don't believe there's an increased risk of crime or any nonsense like that, but we've got a recommendation from our chief with legitimate concerns, mostly based on realistic logistical questions and things we know we don't know about running a cannabis-centric event. And, you know, we've already added two new summer events just in the last couple of years and, you know, the department acknowledges taxing, but they can do it and they're doing it well and, you know, they're doing everything we ask of them. And with this request, the chief has concerns and I think that warrants really serious consideration from us. And I think as Mr. Witz said, the fact is if folks want to consume and head to the festival, they're free to do that. They can actually show up with edibles in their pocket and consume there. So denying this request doesn't interfere with anyone's enjoyment of the festival. You know, marijuana use is legal, that's fine. So I would prefer that much like Manistease Smoke on the Water event, which Mr. Witz mentioned, which has a capacity of 2,000 people, I'd like us to, you know, first find out how to run at the excellent level that we like to do our events and that our public safety professionals like to do our events, like to do it on a smaller scale and move forward with this addition to Arts Beats and Needs another year. So we've taken a similar measure, measured kind of step-by-step approach to many other things, including, you know, alcohol-centric events where, you know, we move forward, we pressure test it and then we expand from there. That feels like the right approach to me here. I don't feel like, you know, our biggest festival, one of the biggest festivals in the region of the summer is a place to trailblaze on this. I just, I feel like I want to stand with the chief, I want to make sure we're not putting any more onus, you know, any more burden on the neighbors who are already ruffled by the festival than we need to, because there's dancers we don't have right now. So I can't support the request.
Anybody else? I'll go with Commissioner Macy.
Yeah, I appreciate what Commissioner Dubb is saying about this and I'm sort of wrestling with it myself, thinking a lot about the smell and it feels like I'm not totally sure that we have that solved. But I feel like, I think I said already, I feel the opposite way about where is the right place to test this? Something, something new that we're trying for the first time that is drawing a different crowd than we, like, than we expected and don't know what to do with and there, and who knows, but we don't know what to expect from that kind of thing. We know exactly what to expect from Arts Beats and Needs and now we're tweaking one piece of it to see what is this going to do, what is, what is the change here? I think I've made clear that I've been frustrated with how many, how many slow-walking moves we've made about marijuana. I did think that the slow-walking move that we were supposed to do was about the school setback. We didn't do that one. But this one to me feels like trying to say, we're not going to allow this in our Royal Oak's premier festival, like Royal Oak's not ready for this. Royal Oak's been ready. Royal Oak's been ready for years for this and it seems to me like if we're going to be the out-in-front progressive city that we say that we are, then we shouldn't be, we shouldn't be holding off on this for some later date. I mean, I do understand the chief's concerns. I think a lot of the concerns are around in being new and I'm not sure at what time it would not feel that same way. I feel like if we're not going to be having a lot of marijuana-only events in the next few years, there's going to be some year where we add this to Arts Beats and Eat and I guess I'm not hearing a reason that this year is necessarily different than another year in terms of what we're able to try for ourselves. So that's sort of where I am on it. I don't feel very strongly about it, but I think it's fine. And I think if we're the city that we say that we are and that we understand our populace, I think they would be fine with this too. And that's certainly what I've been hearing, the majority of people that I've talked to about this, the kind of, the same thing we heard from the people in the nearby apartment complex, like, yeah, that's fine, you know, I can already do it in my house, I can already do it with my neighbor and their porch and, yeah, to me, it's going to be interesting to see what the first one we have of this, whether it's this one or not, how people react and what the ripple effect of it is. But I feel comfortable with this one. I feel like it's probably as well-controlled as it could be in an environment that we are already familiar with. So I'm fine with it, but curious to hear what others say.
Commissioner Collo?
Thank you, Ms. Moore. And I really echo what Commissioner Macy just said too. You know, I do agree with Commissioner Dubb on some things. However, though, I think that it's time to desymetize marijuana. I mean, quite frankly, it's legal in the state by an overwhelming majority. It was overwhelmingly voted for in Royal Oak also, which is, I think, important to, you know, to remember this. I look at the other parts of this festival too. The fact that we're going smoke-free in 85% of the festival is a huge benefit to me. You know, I've told the story a lot lately. My little girl was almost burnt in the face last year by someone smoking their cigarette and then holding it down to their side, you know, and there's prevalent smoke all over Arts Beats and Needs. So the fact that we're getting that, you know, we're smoke-free out of this, and as I was discussing with the chief earlier, pot is at Arts Beats and Needs. We are not going to stop people from smoking pot, from thinking they're slyly vaping it, even though everyone sees when you hold up a vape pen, or, you know, consuming it in an edible form. This gives us opportunity to regulate it. It gives our police the ability to shut down the area where it's being sold and mostly consumed. So the fact, you know, we're not going to stop it from coming in. So this is at least a way that we have the ability to put some rules around it, which I think is pretty important to the safety and security of the rest of the city. We've not talked a lot about the up to $50,000 that we're looking at getting for the Civic Foundation this year. I mean, that is a lot of money, that is a playground. There's a huge improvement that we have that can come from this four-day event in addition to the other funds that we get every year. to the other funds that we get every year. So there's also a, you know, that 7.5% of their total sales, it will add up quickly. Or it won't, because it won't be popular, then none of these concerns will matter. But it won't, you know? So that's where I'm leaning towards yes on this. Now, what I will say is that we have talked a lot about the odor and someone discussed it, you know, someone came up and said they love that smell. It is not for everyone, you know, including me. So I do think that if we do approve this tonight, that we approve it with the stipulation that there are some more order control mechanisms put into place. We're not going to solve that here at the table tonight, but I think that's something that we, you know, make the applicant come back to us with, a carbon filter, something that's going to go on those fans, to keep, you know, to disperse that smell. We're not looking for the, you know, we saw really sophisticated systems two weeks ago. I can't see anyone doing that, but surely there's a filter. You know, if seven other festivals have done this, if our friends in San Francisco are doing it, someone has a solution out there. And with four months until the end of summer, I think we can find how to control it between now and then and write it into any agreement that they will find it. I think that'd be pretty important for me. But as we said, you know, it's legal in the state of Michigan, it's legal in the city of Royal Oak, and pot is there already. I'm hard-pressed to say no to this. Thank you.
Commissioner Douglas.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Chief, for your thoughtful analysis and the research work you've done on this. And I appreciate the fact that you've spent your entire career fighting against marijuana, and now all of a sudden it's like knocking on your door. So that's an uncomfortable spot to be in, but here we are. As I've been finding out, this is a legal substance, and it's a legal substance. I will maybe take issue with the concern that people would consume marijuana and drink and become unruly, because I think that the real medical danger is people becoming comatose from that. So I'm not so worried about the EMS responses. This is a big risk for Art's Beats and Eats, for Mr. Witz. If he gets complaints, if he gets, pardon the pun, no, don't pardon the pun, blowback on all of this, it's going to affect his brand, it's going to affect attendance next year, it's going to affect his sponsorships. So he has a lot at stake here, and I think that risk to him is what is going to motivate him and his sponsor here to conduct this event as safely and properly as they can. I remain concerned about the smell. My husband abhors it, and I'm sympathetic to his feelings and to those of many other people who don't like the smell as well. But again, to me, that's the biggest risk here, is smell. And if that smell becomes so offensive that people go, I am never coming back to Art's Beats and Eats, I mean, that's on Mr. Witz. But I, for one, am willing to give this a chance for one year and see how it works.
Anybody else? Commissioner Allen.
I agree with what Commissioner Macy said earlier, that, you know, in a few years, there's going to be marijuana at Art's Beats and Eats. There's going to be marijuana at other festivals. It wasn't too long ago that, you know, walking around and drinking a beer at a festival was faux pas. It was frowned upon. My concern, and I'm not too concerned with the smell, because we already smell marijuana at Art's Beats and Eats. It waives through the crowd anyways. My concern is that the chief is concerned and that he has uncertainties with this particular I don't know where I'm landing right now, but I do give deference to the fact that the chief and his men and his women are the ones that are going to have to, you know, keep this area safe. So those are my thoughts.
I'll just, you know, maybe give my thoughts here, because I've been on the fence. Well, I first understood that this was going to be something proposed here. We have a great operator in John Witz. I mean, he puts on, for the last 25 years, has put on amazing festivals. And in fact, one weird statistic that I've been able to, and maybe the chief can knock me down on this, but we actually have less arrests sometimes during Art's Beats and Eats than we would normally on a weekend, just because, you know, it's just a different vibe. Don't state that as fact, but it's not like we have incremental, you know, arrests for basically, you know, growing our population by sevenfold. We have a great operator at House Adink. They've been around the longest operator for a long time here in the state of Michigan since 2015. They're a good sponsor. I'm not aware of any misgivings or issues of how they operate their business. They operate legally in the state, and they have been. And, you know, I don't have any concerns about their ability to manage or secure the festival. And of course, we have, you know, the best police department, I think, in, you know, all of Michigan. And I'm a little bit biased, but I really do believe that. And we have an amazing chief and great crew that work tirelessly off the Woodward Dream Crows, other events, and they come back in and they do Art's Beats and Eats on Labor Day weekend, when they could be up north fishing or doing whatever they like to do. And they're here to keep all our patrons and all our visitors and the community safe during this time, and they do it with excellence. And it's really one of these issues where I don't think anybody's wrong. I mean, I think, you know, Mr. Witz makes some compelling arguments. I think the chief makes some compelling arguments. But what it comes down to is the uncertainty, in my opinion. The question is, you know, is it, you know, is it now the time? I think ultimately what it comes down to. I think there are legitimate concerns about policing it, but I also think we don't know, even though, yeah, people can bring in marijuana into the festival, we know they're going to do that, and they smoke it, and they're going to drink alcohol. What we don't know is when you kind of put those things together with 400,000 people, you know, is that going to create other issues we're just not aware of? And is this the festival and is this the time? Or is next year a better time? I think that's the key question for me, or the year after. You know, what we don't know is that issue here, it's the uncertainty. We know, like I said, House Adink is a good operator. Mr. Witz is a good operator. We know our police department is, you know, top-notch. And, you know, something I learned tonight, I guess, is I didn't really make this connection between the alcohol and cannabis, you know, combined together and the difficulties that that can create. And like we said, people are out there, we smell it. You know, every now and then, my kids will ask, what's that? You know, is somebody burning tea? No. You know, tea kettle hasn't been left on. And, you know, the odor is, to me, another issue we've talked about that I'm not certain yet of the ability at a festival of this size with the proximity in an urban densely populated area. You know, one joint, you know, I walk my dog often, not this late at night, you smell one joint, you know, it kind of takes up maybe three or four houses when you smell. You know, if you have 100 of them, you know, even though those fans are shooting 100 feet in the air, we don't know. And so for me, it's the uncertainty that's gnawing away at me right now. It's not the fact that there's a good plan, it's not the fact that we have a good operator, it's not the fact that, you know, we have an amazing police department. It's the uncertainty at the scale of 400,000 people that just gnaws away at me a little bit right now. But I'll leave it at that as far as my words at the moment. Anybody else? All right, well, there is a...
No, there's not.
Yes, sir.
One second. We have, just so everyone understands how everything was teed up, we have a resolution in the document to deny the permit. That's the way it's been written inside the document, just so we don't get a double negative confusion. Commissioner Collo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Brigg, if we wanted to not deny this today, there's not a resolution here, could we give direction to have staff discuss? We've talked a lot at this table. Maybe there is some compromises that can be made between Mr. Witz, the chief, hearing all our discussions and bring that back to us at our next meeting? Or is there an action we could take tonight that's affirmative?
Well, I think that the promoter is looking at for the time of the essence. Honestly, I don't know what better information that you're going to receive by the next meeting.
Okay, so what's an affirmative vote right now?
So if it comes to the staff, this is something that we have discussed this and, you know, respect what the promoter has done and has run an excellent program, but it's not a comfort level than any of us have at a staff level. So if we're to come back, it's, you know, I don't even know if they would be amenable to edibles only, doesn't sound like it based on the discussion, but I think you had the information before you this evening and, you know, just simply voted up or down. But if you collectively, if you delegate the staff, then we will bring that back at the next meeting.
We do not have a motion on the table yet, so, Mr. Witz, a question to you. The timing is important for you guys to get an affirmative decision today, because I imagine you have planning to do. I mean, this isn't, you got to order fans, scaffolding, all that.
It's not just the, it's not just the planning. It's the, there's a 90-day requirement at the state of Michigan that has to be, you know, in by June. It's not that there couldn't be, you know, a few days that we would put to it and we would just, you know, ask that it would be best efforts on the, you know, fan situation because they go through all the, you know, we absolutely will research, you know, everything that was proposed, you know, but to be able to, you know, guarantee, you know, the supersonic filter systems. I mean, but again, we have a very resourceful operations team and, you know, I will use the old TV show MacGyver's galore on our squad, you know, that are good at, you know, figuring things out and, you know, and working to, you know, toward the concerns that are there. I'm, you know, I'm confident about it. So I have other things, and I know I was only asked that one question.
Anybody else? Commissioner Douglas.
All right, I'll do it. I will move that we resolve that the City Commission hereby approves the request from Jonathan Witz and Associates to add a cannabis sales and consumption area to Art's Beats and Eats on September 2 through 5, 2022.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy. This is a motion to approve the permit.
Approve.
Okay. Discussion. Commissioner Macy.
So I'm just going to say what I, essentially what I said before, just in sort of response to you, Mayor, about the uncertainty of this. Everything new we do here has a degree of uncertainty to it. We didn't know if what we asked was going to be successful. We didn't know if putting the downtown park in was going to be successful. Guess we could have guessed. Everything we do here to prove the table has a pretty high degree of uncertainty if it's the first time we've ever done it. And I'll just say again, it feels to me like we've been taking the slowest decision on marijuana, even though that's not what our residents have told us that they've been looking for out of us. And this, to me, it doesn't seem like there's actual safety concerns here, there's just concerns about the logistics. And given that the logistics are the primary concern, handing it to someone who we know has handled some fairly complicated logistics in the city over a long period of time feels like the right move to me.
Commissioner Dubb.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate Commissioner Macy's comments. I just, with regard to legalization of cannabis and retailing in our city, I think that's one thing, I think, you know, special unemployment at our largest festival of the year is not necessarily foreign within that wheelhouse. I guess I don't understand the pressure, the tremendous public benefit, the value to the residents to say, like, this is in keeping with the direction that we've been given. I think having a cannabis-centric event would be a good thing. I think it would be great if we had the support of the police department and the confidence of the police department, that they can do it and do it well in partnership with the event promoter, and we don't have that in this case. So again, because it is new, because there's no pressing public benefit in doing it, I'm willing to stand with the chief on his recommendation.
Commissioner Perush.
I'm going to essentially agree with what Commissioner Dubbuck said, especially about the response of the police department in terms of this request. The police department and as well as the fire department and all the rest of the city staff that help us with all kinds of events in the city usually bend over backwards and find ways to make it work, whether it's Art's Beats and Eats or the Dream Cruise, which is another event that, you know, taxes the system and the community. And just about in every other case where we have come before them and have said, oh, this is a new event, we're going to try, they have essentially said, okay, we will make it work, and they have made it work. But in this particular instance, they're really uncomfortable with it. And you can't break it down into, well, they think there's going to be these type of incidents, that there's going to be this type of behavior, or there's going to be this or that. My sense, it's more than anything else, a gut feeling that this is just not right, that there's just going to be potentially too many issues with this and it's not worth the risk. And that's kind of where I'm coming down on it, too. At this particular point in time, my gut is telling me this is just not right right now. And so I'm going to have to agree with the chief, that this is just not the right time for this right now. There's too many things that we don't know about what is going to happen, and this is not the time and this is not the event to try it out. So that's why I'm not going to vote for this resolution.
Commissioner Collo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And once again, I just want to thank the chief also. I mean, the chief and I had a really great conversation today, and, you know, he laid out his concerns very well, and he's a law enforcement professional here, and you have to respect that. This is a lot of the unknown, which there, you know, this is simply what it is, it's unknown. But I'm also, I know that the chief and his crew will take care of us no matter what. Art's Beats and Eats will be safe, no matter what. And this could be a way to find out if this works. You know, we were presented with two other events that will happen this summer before Art's Beats and Eats that are approved by other municipalities. I would say we monitor, you know, if this is approved, we monitor those also and then see how those events work. And if they don't work, the chief exercises his authority to not allow this from the get-go. You know, we don't have to, you know, the chief can say no once it's, you know, right away, in the interest of public safety. So I would monitor those two events this summer as a trial to see if that works and then use that to know, you know, yes, this is a larger-scale event. There's no other event that's going to happen in Michigan where we test it this size. It just won't happen. So that, you know, I'm leaning towards yes on that.
Commissioner Dubb.
Sorry, I just have to say I fundamentally disagree that the chief could preemptively nix the event without cause, without there being serious legal ramifications from the petitioner. I don't think that that's something that he can do.
Commissioner Collo.
I guess I appreciate Commissioner Dubbuck's legal opinion. How about Mr. Leal, do you have any opinion on that?
On that, I would have to, I don't like to join or intervene between two opposing commissioners, but...
We never oppose.
But I would have to agree with Commissioner Dubbuck that, you know, the chief is not simply going to shut it down because of something perceived. He's going to have to have some legitimate reasons to do that. And if he doesn't, I'm sure that not just Mr. Witz, but the, I forget your name, but general counsel for the promoter behind this event or that portion of the event is going to be probably calling me and asking me why the chief shut this down without any cause. So for this one, I will, I will agree with Commissioner Dubbuck on his assessment. The chief will need some type of cause.
Saved all that money on law school.
Legal Zoom subscription really worked out for you, didn't it? All right, any other discussion?
Let me just say that.
I mean, I think we had some pretty productive debate here up at the table. You know, I think there's a pretty hearty discussion from the petitioner and from the chief. And, you know, we're charged with making decisions, and they're not always easy, they're not always black and white, and sometimes we kick the bucket down the road and sometimes we take a little risk. So we'll see how this one goes. This is a vote to approve the permit, and I guess if there's not any more comment, I will call for the vote. Okay? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No.
Can I get a hand of the ayes? Three, so the motion fails. So, Mr. Leal, is it required to do a motion to deny if the motion to approve failed?
Under broad results of order, then the entire item is dead. So, but if you want to take another motion to deny, to make sure that it's... So, but if you want to take another motion to deny, to make sure that it's, there are no questions, you're free to do that.
I just don't know how the application process will work with this.
Yeah, you don't have...
I don't think we have to do that.
No, I don't, I don't think, I'm just double checking. Okay, all right, well, we do appreciate the time, gentlemen.
We'll see you in September one way or another.
Yes, we'll see you in September one way or another. Okay, this brings us to item 10, which is the approval of license agreement 32302 Woodward Avenue Parking in Right of Way, Nakota Road. I see our city engineer out of the corner of my eye, Ms. Donahue.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and commissioners. Tonight before you reveal items, we're the new property owner of 32302 Woodward Royal Wood LLC is here and they're planning to open a jewelry store at this location, which is on the east side of Woodward at the intersection of Nakota. Since the 1960s, there's been a paved parking area at that location within the right of way of Nakota, though there's nothing on record that shows that it's actually been formally approved as an encroachment in the right of way. The property owner is requesting use of the area under a formalized license agreement because the property does not have any onsite parking. So they're proposing reconstructing this area on Nakota and improving it with an ADA compliant design that has ADA compliant slopes, and also providing a 25-foot buffer from the ramps that are, that cross over Nakota, which currently is not there. Right now, parking goes right up to the sidewalk area. So by doing that, they would have eight parking spaces off of Nakota. So staff is recommending denial of the license agreement, which is consistent with how we usually approach these items. Perpendicular parking spaces must use almost that entire roadway of Nakota, about 20 of the 27 feet that are available there to enter and exit the spots, so that would block both east and westbound traffic, as well as if somebody is turning off of Woodward, there's a potential conflict point there if they don't, if they're not paying enough attention. Additionally, you know, our stance is always get rid of hard surface where we can and put grass or green, green space where feasible. So if the parking area is removed, we would have three on-street parking spaces on the north side of Nakota, along with the existing street parking on the south side of the road. The proposed improvements for this project also include reconstruction of the parking area along Woodward. Of course, that's M.D.A. Right of Way, so we don't do that under a license agreement, but that would provide another six parking stalls and then one handicap parking stall as well. So we are recommending denial, but the license agreement is drafted for your consideration in case you wanted to move forward with that. It indemnifies the city, makes the property owner responsible for insurance and coverage and removal if there's ever a reason we need to get rid of that in the future. So I think the petitioner is here tonight. If you have any questions of me or him, go for it.
We'll start with questions for city engineer, any questions? Commissioner Douglas.
Yes. Ms. Donahue, could we compromise here and allow them to have, I think there are like eight parking spaces there, it looks like, allow them to have perhaps the four furthest east and perhaps convert the four closest to Woodward into green space, a compromise that gets us some permeable pavement and moves the parking away from Woodward where there are potential conflicts?
Certainly, yeah, you kind of have the authority to think what you will and won't allow out there, but that's, that's a nice compromise, to at least give more of a buffer there.
Y'all might guess where I'm leaning.
Any other questions? Commissioner Collo.
Are there any other areas on Woodward where this, where we have a license agreement like this in place?
The only one I'm aware of is at the sign of the beef carver. Were you approved that two or three years ago, probably?
Yeah.
And that was a bit of a contentious decision, but in the end, they, we ended up approving that, I think for handicap parking close to the restaurant.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Donahue? The petitioner want to give any statements or kind of bring us up to speed from your perspective?
Hi, I'm Tim Gordon, I'm 3380 Sleet Road in Commerce Township. So we have from Mr., and I apologize if I don't have his name correct, Mines. There was repeated emails back and forth to update and change drawings to get to how he wanted them done. We did all that and we did it over a number of different times, resubmitted, and we now have standard approved ones from him, approving that. In addition to that, when we bought the building, the parking from the previous owner, they'd been parking there for a long amount of time, I don't know how many years, but it's been a long time. And with, I would have to probably check with the police department, but from everything we found out, there's never been any kind of an incident there caused by those spots being there. So we're really hoping that we won't have to come to any other kind of agreement because we think we've honored all the, you know, everything that they've asked us to do with their agreement legally that they gave us, and as well as changing drawings a number of times and resubmitting them until we got to this approval. So thank you for your time.
Any questions? Commissioner Douglas.
Yes, sir, there's on the eastern edge of the building, along Nakota, there's a, is that a garage door? Are you...
That's where there's going to be the trash dumpster, we wheel in and out from that spot. It'll be, it'll be kept inside.
Okay, and that's the case now?
There's a garage door there now.
Right.
That, it's in the new plan, that will get moved to a different, to the other side of the building, and the dumpster will be rolled out for the garbage disposal.
So there, you'll fill in that, there won't be any door, there'll be a pedestrian door there?
There'll be a pedestrian door for employees.
Got it, okay, thanks.
Commissioner Macy.
Is there, excuse me, is there employee parking around the back?
There's not employee parking around the back. There's one spot. We also have the two leased spots that are attached to that building. Those are ours with tenants in them, so most of the spots on the side will be for our employees, and leave the spots out in front by the entry door for our patrons.
So, you know, the proposal was for eight spots here. Commissioner Douglas has mentioned a compromise to give it four. It looks like if we filled it, if we gave it back to the green space, there would be three on-street, like there would be street parallel spots there.
Ah.
Right?
Correct.
Yeah. So what's, what's the magic number of spots? I mean, I know, I know everybody wants more.
For us, I mean, we, you know, we have, we also keep security, we have our own security in place for our jewelry stores, and so between employees and security, we'll take, we'll pretty much take the spots that are available on this draw. So like I said, the spots out front are more or less going to be for the patrons, the spots on the side will be for the employees primarily.
Okay, thank you.
You know, because you have to have a sales staff and...
Yeah, I get it, I mean, but I also think, like, from jewelry store, it would actually be prettier if there were some green space there, there is some benefit to you as well.
And this plan goes with, along with the plans we're turning in now after tonight's meeting for the improvement of the whole exterior of the building. The whole facade would be, the whole facade would be tore off the front of the building, brand-new facade installed, and along down the side, some parapet work, so along with new HVAC and everything.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Collo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I take it you own the building, then?
I don't own it, I'm the representative for the area.
Okay. Is it, so you represent, you represent someone who owns the whole building there, then?
Correct.
The concrete in front of the proposed, on the Woodward side, is extremely beat up. Is that being replaced also?
Being replaced, too.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Discussion, motions? Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, I will move that the commission authorizes the mayor and city clerk to execute the license agreement for four parking spaces in the eastern, the four most eastern parking spaces, and that they install a permeable surface in the northern, or in the western parking spaces.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas, second by Commissioner Perusch. Discussion.
I think I need a whiteboard to understand what you have.
Commissioner Macy.
Really? She's saying she's, she's literally splitting the baby, which is what, the joke, the joke I was going to make was that, you know, we have wisdom of Solomon here tonight because I don't know what to do. I want you to have any parking spaces, but also we want this green space back, and, yeah, I think, I think splitting the baby is the best option we have here. I'm wondering if we do this, but the four, would there then still be an on-street parking spot where the green space would be? I know, I'm sort of making calculations back of the napkin here, but...
I don't, there's, maybe.
Okay.
There, the physical space is there, but I got to look at proximity to the first stall, and is there a conflict there, but...
We have a motion on the table, we can't, can't do any more comment on this, sorry. Commissioner Collo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. While I do like Commissioner Douglas's compromise, I would have been more leaning towards a denial. Talked a lot about safety tonight, and the second paragraph of this letter talks about the 25-foot distance and cars backing out into roadway, and how that's not a recommendation from the engineering department. So I will, you know, I do love the rain and permeable surfaces, but I would personally have gone more towards denial here.
Are you recommending reverse angle parking?
I voted against, Mike Colly, you watch it, I voted against reverse angle parking. The stupid, the really good system. Strike all of those.
Commissioner Dubb.
I was going to make betcha.
Betcha.
So the proposal that Commissioner Douglas is moving forward gives them the spots they want, there's still a little bit of green space in the corner there, is that right?
It would be half and half.
Uh, yeah.
I mean, so you're, I would, I think, be more comfortable with it if that green space were rain garden or bioswale, so we're maximizing the amount of rainwater we can, you know, we're sacrificing green space here, so...
I'm sorry, how?
There's a little bit of lawn right here, there's lawn right here, green, right?
Oh.
Right there, yeah.
I take your, so my proposal is to make that all permeable. I mean, they've already, oh, you're saying not lawn, but something other than lawn?
I'm saying make it a bioswale or rain garden to maximize the amount, is that not feasible? Maybe I'm not understanding it right.
Well, I'm so...
Looks like Colly wants to say...
Yes, ask me to talk to you.
Wait, we'll go Commissioner Perusch and then Commissioner Douglas, and then let Ms. Donahue answer the question.
Okay, I appreciate the bioswale recommendation, but I'm not the soil engineer by any means, but in this part of the city, you're essentially dealing with clay and not a sandy soil underneath, unlike the soils that are south of 12 Mile. So the difficulty in putting rain gardens in this part of the city is extraordinarily difficult and extraordinarily expensive. So unless there's a little pocket of sandy soil underneath this area, you're talking about big bucks, and I don't think that that's appropriate to put that kind of a burden on the property owner right now. So I agree with grass or some other permeable surface, but not, not a bioswale, because I'm not so sure that it would work, and if it does, it's going to be pretty darn expensive.
Nice tree.
Commissioner Douglas?
So my motion was for a permeable surface, not necessarily a rain garden. It could be stones, and I say this because we've seen issues at the planning commission very similar to this, where the difficulties of maintaining grass there or plants there, trash gets in them, they're difficult to keep, so offering them the opportunity of some sort of permeable surface gives them a little bit of flexibility in terms of not having to plant plants, but maybe using some sort of stones or gravel or something. So it was, it was worded that way specifically.
Same thing.
I'm not totally, so stones, we generally don't allow on the right of way. We have concerns about them getting into the road and getting kicked up, and we have concerns about them being on the sidewalk and causing trip hazards. And every other site plan we review, it's sod is what's required in the right of way. I don't think I could justify forcing someone to do something beyond that if it wasn't for stormwater detention volume or something like that. That would be kind of beyond the bounds of what we typically do. So if we were getting rid of parking areas, I would recommend we just go with lawn, unless the purm, the requister is asking to do something special there with special approval.
All right, so a motion on the table, permeable.
Lawn is permeable.
Yes. Probably the least expensive, put some grass in. Okay, so there's a motion on the table that would split the baby. Potentially have a parallel parking spot there, TBD. You know, just to play devil's advocate here on it, you know, you take away that parking there on the street, you could have issues with people parking further down the street if the front spots are full, and you could also have, you know, obviously, I think it's a more dangerous, this whole unpopular opinion for folks that own buildings on Woodward, but this whole angle parking in the front is just always scary and dangerous. You know, people are talking about reverse angle parking, but on Woodward, it is, I mean, I freak out every time, especially when I got kids in the car, you know, trying to get in and out and like cars flying by. Are you forcing more cars there? Or, you know, someone like me, if I had an option on the side, I would choose to park on the side versus the front. I'm not saying you eliminate the parking in the front, but maybe for people that want safer options. I know it doesn't help the stormwater management situation, but it, I think that it's not problem-free, the suggestion we have on the table. Any other discussion? No? Your hand movements are so subtle, I'm not sure if like you're twitching or if you want to, it's an art I've been trying to learn, yeah, Commissioner Macy.
It's not worth it, no.
All right, I guess I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? No? All right, six one. Okay. All right, so basically what happened is, is they took that spot right there, gave you a license agreement for half, and the other half you got to plant grass. So, you know, you didn't get zero, but you didn't get 100, literally got 50.
Maybe 60.
Maybe 60, if you strike it right. Thank you, sir. All right, if my ayes will work properly, I don't need bifocals, I'm just going to go back a little bit farther. Request to set dates for a special city commission meetings budget work session, this is Mr. Break.
Yep, thank you, Mayor. Based on the busy schedules that you all have, proposing that we conduct the budget workshop that'd be two weeks from today on May 23rd, starting at 4:00, go until 6:30, and we'll bring in dinner for that meeting, then having a second workshop on Wednesday, May 25th, and the possibility is, depending on what the agenda's like at next Monday's meeting, that perhaps we devote part of the time to talk about the budget during the 7:30 commission meeting agenda, so we'll, we'll try to gauge that, so get us out before midnight for those 6:00 AM meetings the following day. But this is what's proposed, so we establish these dates. You have already approved that we're doing the public hearing on June 13th, so we're all set on that, but this is just to set the dates of the budget workshop.
Commissioner Macy.
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Macy, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Perusch, discussion? Commissioner Douglas?
I won't be here.
We'll miss you.
On a serious note, though, Commissioner Douglas, you have a copy of the budget, right?
Yes.
And you could provide feedback to the city manager, but not more than two other of us?
Yep.
Okay.
I'll read it on the plane.
All right. Oh, Commissioner Hunt, sorry, I didn't see him.
For the Monday, May 23rd at 4:00, I will be at the meeting, however, I will not be here at 4:00. It will most likely be 4:30, but otherwise, I would not ask for the meeting to move for that.
Well, usually at these budget meetings, when you hear, you know, all the people always talking about the budget and contracts and all that stuff, I expect that we'll have a long lineup of public comment.
Yeah.
But typically, nobody shows. But we will, we'll keep that in mind, and I'm sure you're gonna be covering the general stuff anyways through the types of resolutions we have to do and the, kind of covering the basic elements of the letter. So, I don't, if you read the letter, I don't think you'll be too far behind, Commissioner Hunt.
Yeah, so, this is less time than what has been spent on this before, so this will be really high level. And for that matter, if there, I would say on the other funds, you know, the main ones that we'll be concentrating on, the general fund, water sewer, local, major, public safety, but the other funds, we probably won't cover unless you alert us that there's specific questions that you have, because this is a pretty short amount of time to cover a large amount of information. So, Julie Redd will not be flipping through page by page, like which you've experienced in the past, so...
Which were the special funds that...
So, that we will cover, the water and sewer, local and major roads. I would say recreation, we should be covering that. Obviously, the library will be part of that. And beyond that, we'll probably not cover as much unless there's some material issues. Say, for instance, parking fund will be discovered, very limited. However, like I said, if you have a question about some of the lesser-known funds, or smaller funds, if you will, alert us of that, so we can cover if there's particular topics within that.
That's the best way to go.
Yeah.
Commissioner Collo?
I guess be alerted on our questions about all those funds. I think that this is the single most important thing that we do as a city, is go over these funds and how we're spending money. This is how we set our priorities for the year. So, even though they're the lesser funds, I, you know, I don't see a need, and I'm sorry, I guess I just fundamentally disagree, I don't see a need to fly over them. So, I hope we do at least cover them, talk about them at all these meetings.
Yeah, and I agree, I think, you know, priorities are nothing more than dreams without a funding source. But I think in the past, we would go through literally $2,000 here, up and down, and all of this stuff, and it was reading the pages. So, I think for the big ones, like environmental sustainability, S-CAP, we just talked about it, what are we doing? Okay, let's call those out. We get to some of the smaller ones, like in the, you know, finance department's office, we are, you know, buying more copier ink, and then we're moving this around. You know, I guess if you're passionate about that, you can ask that question and put it on the list, but I think that, you know, for the most part, we wanna, ultimately, every expenditure comes before us to approve or not approve. So, I think what, I think you're right, Commissioner Collo. I think what Mr. Brake is saying is that maybe we do less, you know, presenting on the big complicated things and important things, and then, you know, wait for commissioners, you know, we go through this booklet and specific questions we have, we can bring up and get answered. You know, I plan to read just each highlight page, and like we did, but instead of doing it here, you know, at the meeting, we can do it, you know, and make it a little bit more productive since we have a compressed schedule.
Right.
You're right, I just think, I think it'll work. If we have to take 10 hours, then we'll take 10 hours. Ex-payers will get their $40 worth, or, I'm sorry, $20.
Yeah, we only get money. We know you get...
I know. I'm rolling in it. My bicycle has a horn.
You can put pegs on it, we can ride together.
I'll put pegs on it, so you can... All right, I guess I will call for the vote. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, that brings us to the last item, except for the one I inadvertently put as 13 instead of 7.5. My apologies about that. Discussion of Washington Avenue parking configurations options, as requested by Commissioners Collo, Mayor Protam Macy, and Commissioner Douglas. I'll hand this over to Commissioner Collo to kick it off.
Okay, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last Thursday, the city manager's office had invited, in coordination with the DDA manager and several commissioners, an invitation to retailers to come and talk to us about the downtown parking and the configuration and how that, you know, what their thoughts are. It was a very productive conversation with those who showed up, although I will say I'm kind of sad that I've seen this petition going about, but failed to see anyone who is responsible for that petition accept our invitation to discuss this, because we had a really fruitful conversation. So, tonight, I'd like to talk about with Chief of Police and Deputy Chief Spencer there and Ms. Donahue, how we can potentially change parking configurations on Washington Avenue. As I see it right now, the back end could've worked. I think that we're at a phase where we might wanna move on from it.
That was a common question, rhetorical. I mean, I think that, I think your question is, is we got a lot of feedback, maybe to kick it off, is, you know, what it would look like, you know, what are our different options to address the concerns, being one, changing the configuration, two, changing something else, or three, leaving it at as-is. I know, you know, my thing is, people are using it. I had to go and actually seek out a reverse angle spot, and we found one, and I got in, backed in, had another issue, but the spot parking was fine. We've had lengthy debate here about, you know, is it the safest form versus front-end pull-in? I can tell you when, just personally, the front end, when you pull in at an angle, backing out between two Ford F-150s has been scary, you know, especially since I have a smaller car now. But I think at the end of the day, there's, you know, you still have people out there that are resistant, have done it for six months. Do you do it for a year? Do we have enough information now? I think there's a lot of questions out there. We're looking to you guys for your expertise and guidance, because I think ultimately the commission here, I mean, much to some conspiracy theorists, you know, we're not out to hurt business. I mean, we do things to make things safer, we try things, you know, and get a lot of anecdotal information, but we don't always get, you know, a lot of data, because it's almost impossible to get it. So, we understand the purpose of having a uniform system in the community to not confuse people, but I guess we'll hand it over to you. There's been some concerns, you guys have heard them. You know, what are your thoughts, and how can you stimulate the conversation on the side of the table?
Guess I add you to the straw. Okay.
That's not helpful, that's fine.
I'll comment on the different parking options. Whether one is better than the other, it's very difficult to say, it's conjecture, right? I think front-end angle parking is off the table unless we go with some other parking system than MPS. My understanding is there's no way to monitor those spots otherwise.
I can jump in with this if you want. If we decide to go back to pull-in parking, you lose two of the features that MPS offers with the system. You lose the true-up capability, as well as the concierge capability, because it simply can't get a plate read. So, if we chose that option, it would be manual enforcement, but you would lose those two options, those two features with the new system.
Okay.
The other biggest thing is that now you're, you're taking away two of the biggest features, the ability to pay an expired meter. In other words, giving folks the ability to avoid a violation and then be in compliance with our paid parking, but then now you have two separate systems. You have a different system over on Washington, because it can't do those two things compared to the rest of the city that can do those two things. So, then you have confusion about, okay, I'm in an area where I can pay an expired meter, or I'm in an area where I can't pay an expired meter. And I think that's gonna bring confusion on that side as well.
Sounds like we have frustrations with, you know, UI anyways at the moment, just in general.
So, that's option one. Go back to the way it was. Option two is parallel parking. We certainly have the space to do it. We came up with a rough layout of that back in July or August, when we first were talking about this. So, that would be 33 fewer spots than what is out there right now, give or take a spot, because it's a rough design, but, so that's a big loss in parking, but that also opens up the road quite a bit. So, you could look at, the simplest option is restructuring the road. You could continue the bike lanes that are south of Lincoln, dedicated bike lanes, and continue those through up to Forest Street. Those would be buffered, they'd be a little bit more comfortable, so that's an option. And then, the other option is, you know, keep with what we have. Is there a way to maybe increase education about it, or having more people on the street? That's not really my department, but six months isn't a whole lot of time for something that's completely new to everybody in the city. I think to almost everybody in the city, that it's a new concept. So, those are the options and what we could do with them. And I'll go one step further with parallel parking. There's like a whole world of things we could do with that road. There would be major reconstruction, major redesign, but we could look at more protected bike lanes, we could look at more green space. All the options are out there, but that's like a years-long type of process, so...
Right, right. Commissioner Macy, and then Commissioner Collo.
Yes, thank you for the options. So, you know, I was, I've met with the retailers and just, so, for a little update for some of the people who weren't there, the major part of the complaints was the back-end parking. So, there are considerable complaints about the system in general, but the people were pretty much focused on the back-end parking as the biggest overall complaint that they have about the system there. So, I mean, to me, keeping it as it is, I mean, someone at the, someone one of the retailers mentioned, like, it's not like it's just new to Royal Oak, as was just mentioned, it's new to everybody. Nobody, it doesn't, it hardly exists anywhere else. And then, most of the places where you have this back-end parking, it's on a one-way street. So, you don't have the problem of you're going here and then you are trying to stop the person behind you, and we're seeing a lot of people who are angry about that. It's just, it's not working well, and it's not like we have the same group of people who are coming every time, who are just gonna adjust to it after six months. We have new people coming to Royal Oak all the time. And the retailers were saying that the level of frustration in their establishments is through the roof. Literally, every person who walks in mentions the parking, and they just said they've never experienced anything like it before. But I, my understanding was that the back-end parking was the major problem, and that solving that problem would be, would go a long way towards alleviating a lot of these concerns. Not alleviating all of them. And I have one question I guess I have for Ms. Donahue, is that it was, it was mentioned about, at the meeting, when we talked about if we went to the parallel spots and then like the things we could do with the roadway, like bike lanes and green space, but I think Ms. Davidson brought up, or someone brought up, that if we, if we did that, we would need space, because we have the same situation on, in terms of backing in, like you want to be able to have a lane to go around and not be stuck behind someone most of the time. Yes?
Well, you would have that space, because it would be the bike lane, plus probably another two or three feet of buffer. So, you have enough room to kind of move over, cars can go around you and do that parallel parking. Of course, if somebody's not in the bike lane. If someone is in the bike lane, you wait your turn and take your time to park.
But that would be the restripping option, not the reconfiguring the whole roadway option, right?
Correct.
Okay. So, it seemed like most people would be happy to go to parallel, like if that were the option, they really don't want to keep the back-end parking. I'm worried the parallel is not gonna solve all of our problems, and we're gonna be discussing this six months from now, because there's gonna be 33 fewer spots that people are gonna be angry about, and people are still gonna be having concerns about the system, and we're gonna be still using that same system. So, I understand the concerns about, you know, mixing up the systems and having features available in one place that aren't available in another place, but we're having so many complaints about the system, that prioritizing maintaining that system in every part of our city seems strange to me. It seems like if we could have a part of the city where it worked and people were familiar with it, they wouldn't be thinking like, oh, shoot, I forgot I can't true-up here. They'd be like, thank God the parking works here. So, my opinion would be to switch it, just go back to the way it was. And that was one thing we heard from the retailers, kind of some frustration with, you changed this, and now you can't even change it back? Like, you can't fix it, you have to do, you have to do something again that messes it up? So, yes, they'd be happy that the back end was gone, they'd be happier than they are now, but they'd be less happy than they were six months ago before we installed this in the first place. So, we're not really solving the problem universally, we're just making it slightly better, and I think we're gonna be continuing to solve the problem down the road. So, it doesn't sound like people think that the forward end is an option, unless we go with a different enforcement mechanism, but my understanding is that we still have the same parking enforcement officers. Like, we didn't let anybody go, that was a question we made the first time around.
Yeah, we still have the same staff, that some of their roles and responsibility have changed, because there is the human element to validate these tickets that are generated by the cameras. So, there is that human function where our staff has to validate all these violations.
Okay. Okay, so I guess I need the math about whether or not changing this to be head-in, where they would have to physically ticket, versus how much time they would otherwise spend looking at the tickets generated by the system in the parallel. I guess that's, I'm sure, I'm sure that's math you don't have in front of you, that seems...
Unfortunately, no.
...complicated. But, I mean, to me, the true-up and the concierge, we're not, those are not fantastic, fabulous features of this system that we thought that they were gonna be. I think we resold that bill of goods, and we're still waiting to have those pan out, and to me, going back to the way that we, it worked and we know it works, I don't, I know no one else is having these same thoughts, but that's, to me, that's the thing that makes the most sense.
Commissioner Macy? Yeah, I'll just add, remember, the baseline before, the whole impetus, not just the 2G going away and the meters, but ever since I've been up at this table, ever since I've lived in the city my entire adult life, you know, people have complained about parking one way or another. They complain that they get a ticket, they complain that it's parallel, they complain that it's front. So, unless you can figure out how to put a Costco parking lot in the middle of our downtown and call it a downtown, you're gonna naturally get complaints. So, you're right, I'm proving your point, but I think I'm also opening up a little bit of question here, is that no matter what you do, you're gonna have folks that are gonna just not accept it. And, you know, you say, oh, I want more parking, but some folks are saying, well, put a four-hour limit. Well, that doesn't help with your parking, because parking's like a reservation spot, you want cycling. So, there's a lot of conflict I see among people even, and the fact that, I understand we get a lot of, and I'm empathetic, about the reverse angle parking, and it probably could use a change, but I, you know, walk my dog quite a bit, and I live a half mile from town, and somebody's customers are parking in those spots. You know what I mean? So, who are they? So, there's a lot of interesting stuff out there that, you know, but I'm convinced, no matter what you do, if your goal is to make people happy to come to Royal Oak and search for a parking spot, and have to put money in a meter, and worry about that time and all that, and pay for, and not pay for, I mean, it's, I don't know how you do it, but I'll just throw it out there.
Well, I'll just say, my goal is for people to come and not have their main experience in Royal Oak, be frustrated at the parking.
Yeah, but that's been that way since...
That's what's happened in Washington.
I mean, anytime you have a meter, I mean, we just, somebody, you know, you get a $10 ticket back in the day, and people would go crazy. They'd go to the courthouse and go crazy. You know, it's, I think anytime...
The scope is so changed.
Well, the scope, yeah, I mean, it has, enforcement has. I'll give you that. Mr. Brake wants to interject, and then we'll go to Commissioner Collo.
Sure. Here's kind of my take on the system, and I came from another community that had just as much challenge in parking. Thank goodness we don't have parking districts and neighborhoods added then on top of things. My concern overall, we have, I believe, 4,600 parking spaces when you include all the decks. It's a pretty sophisticated system. And for us to do some patchwork and say, oh, wait, we need to change that back and keep configuring, I wanted to spend a little bit of time, and there was some misinformation that was made at the podium, to talk about the parking study. The DDA board, which I sit on and a voting member, is to revive, there was a study that was done by this company called Rich and Associates back in 2018, and it's not to evaluate MPS, that is not the purpose of that. It's to talk about capacity, circulation, and setting rates. The other item that's complained about frequently, which has nothing to do with MPS, is that two-hour limit. That's what I've heard loud and clear, that's been a complaint kind of universally throughout the system on any of the surface street parking. My suggestion is, we need to do a better job of PR, but we also need to carefully look at the numbers and to look at parking consultants. That's a field and an area where people devote their professional careers in. I'm uncomfortable with... I'm, I'm uncomfortable with making a tweak like that to, I, I'm not dismissive. I, I get what people are saying, you know. I, I'm a believer in the reverse angle parking. However, the, the one argument that people make that I do concur with is that people tailgate. And when you're in Washington, you need a wider spot to be able to, to pull back into that spot. And a lot of times, people are right up on your bumper and you're thinking, well, I'll just circle the block and hopefully that parking space is still there. And it's not when you go around. But I go back to the, the study, it's not going to give us information immediately. I know there's this demand where, where the individuals want relief. That is my suggestion, rather than doing some piecemeal sort of thing that we could six-months later, well, wait a minute, we're, we're going to change that. And having consistency throughout the parking system, I think, is paramount to, to making this work. And so we need to work our way out of, this is a difficult situation. No doubt about it. And we need to do a better job of communicating that. And part of that I put in MPS is that they have other tools that they can help us with, that they haven't really stepped that up. And that, that's a message that we can send to them loud and clear in, in that regard. And so that's my suggestion, but kind of from my professional experience, parking systems are so sophisticated. I, I, you know, I, I, I'm very reluctant to look at making any tweaks without, you know, touching base with the, the, and if anyone wants to look at the 2018 parking study that was done, it, it compares us with other communities, what the rate are, how long the limit should be, things like that. And that gets into the policy discussion that I think would be very valid, that perhaps that a lot has changed since 2018. When you consider the 11-mile parking deck is now part of the system. We have Henry Ford Health that's bringing in this new customer base. And, and the dynamics of the system has changed dramatically. But when we look at, I think it's 60,000 parking sessions that occur in a month. I mean, that's a pretty active system. And the vast majority of them are successful. But, but we do need to concentrate where the weaknesses in the system. And let's focus our energy on that and engage in that, in that conversation and, and do a better job of educating folks. And when that, that meaningful information comes out, let's look at the, the, the whole system. We may need to, to revise the two-hour limit. I, I don't know the answer to that question, and I don't even want to take a guess at it. But I think based on that data that's aggregated, will give us a better understanding of how we can better manage that system. As opposed to, you know, making a tweak here, hope it works, make a tweak there and hope it works. So that's my suggestion for, for what it's worth, but we'll respect the wishes if you want to make a very significant change. But I do worry about, the real easy answer is to go with the parallel parking. But I, I fear that losing those 33 parking spaces, we're going to get an earful of saying that now that the, the system is worse because I used to be able to park close to my favorite restaurant or salon or whatever, and, and those are, those are gone and, and not coming back. So.
Commissioner Collo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've sat through a lot of resident.
Mayor?
Yeah, I got you. He was up before you.
I didn't see that.
I've sat through a lot of comedians with the Restaurant Association, the retailers now, different, department. I've bugged the police more than anything about this, I'm sure. And I, I think, had the system, had we, you know, had we had a parking meter that worked flawlessly from day one, and the only pain point was back-end angled parking, that's something that we could talk about. Had we had a really successful PR campaign that was, you know, constantly out there and paying out fires before they got big, that would be one pain point. But that's not where we are right now. We have, we have two big pain points in town right now. Back-end angled parking and the operation of the Sentry system itself. We're not talking about Sentry tonight. But what we can control is the back-end angled parking. As Commissioner Macy said and has been pointing out to us, when you have back-end angle, the optimal way to do it is a one-way street where there's an escape lane so people can get around you. That's not happening. We, we don't have space for that on Washington Avenue. There's just not enough. I think right now, and I, you know, I appreciate Mr. Bray not wanting to patch this together, but I think it's been elevated high enough to a point where there's a fire that needs to be put out. And this is one quick fire that we can put out. And as has been said in the past, this is just paint. You know, we're not going to reconfigure a road today. We're not going to push out the curbs. We're just going to repaint and move some park, you know, parking sticks. That can be redone. We can still do the study that Mr. Bray is talking about. And when we get the results, you know, next year, late this fall, whenever they come out, we can make an informed decision. And I think there's an informed decision to be made around how we use our policy and how we, you know, talk about a three-hour limit, whatever. In the meantime, though, I think that this is a pain point we can take away and really start controlling the narrative around this again. So because of that, I'm going to move that we move to parallel parking on Washington Avenue.
Motion by Commissioner Collo, is there a second? We have a second by Commissioner Macy. Okay, discussion, and you kind of gave your discussion ahead of the motion. So I'm going to go to Commissioner Douglas and then Commissioner Dubois.
I'm not anticipating a motion. I was going to say something else, so I'll say what I was going to say. Just observing that there are, we've always had two-hour limits on meters in downtown. Now, people could kind of get around this. They'd get lucky, right? They'd stay an extra 15 minutes and the meter person didn't come around and they, they got away with something. And so we're always going to, I mean, we always need to steel ourselves against people who are now not getting away with things. But if we extended those meters to three hours, we would have the same number of people and the same level of complaint. Darn it, I got a, a ticket because I stayed past the time on my meter. Similarly, we've always, like, in the past, you could always put quarters in a, in a meter to park. Guess what? You can still put quarters in a meter to park. You don't need a credit card, you don't need to use the app. You can still use quarters. And I do think we fixed the quarter issue, you know, acceptance problems, right? So I think those are things that, and that's something that we can remind people. But I will point out that several of the people, the retailers who participated in our meeting talked about the city of Birmingham, which they say clobbers you over the head at every turn with two hours, first two hours free in the parking structures. And I think Ms. Davids was at our meeting with them, and I'm, I'm hoping and guessing that, that she took that to heart. And we'll carry that message back to say, we need to do way, way better signage. It's not PR, it's not brochures, it's signage that people see when they come into the city. Because that's really been our strategy all along, is to move people into the structures. So, I mean, I, that's something we can fix, and we can fix really quickly. And no matter what else we do, I would say, let's please do that.
I wholeheartedly agree. And I think that, I mean, we talked creatively years ago about having lights shining down on the pavement that showed, you know, free parking, two hours, and then it would guide you to the Lafayette structure or whatever. When I'm downtown, we have our nice signs that, you know, have like the, like parking, like the little arrows or whatever, and maybe they're not arrows. Yeah, the wayfinding. But you need the big P with the, you know, like, two hours free, big P, you know, violation-free parking this way. You know, really, that's what it is. It's viol, I mean, I guess if you stayed there 24 hours, it might be an issue, but. I think when people are coming in, I, I mean, they're, all they presume, our parking garages are so nice, they blend in so well, they think they're condos. Which is great if you, you know, live in downtown, but if you're looking for a place to park, it's not always great. And I really do think that, honestly, that would solve, because I think there are people that only see the street parking and that's it. Because that's what they're used to. They're used to going to Clausen who doesn't have a parking garage. Or, you know, when I go to Birmingham, I have to go there from time to time. I immediately know what garage I'm going to. And, you know, I don't even want to hassle with meters because I'm not even sure. So I think that's a big thing. I think what's, you know, what's interesting is, and I think that will get a lot more, that will solve a lot of issues. I think the parallel parking, which we have right now, is a little bit more, more interesting because you have the ability to activate space, which not only solves one problem, like, hey, it gets rid of the reverse angle, which seems to be a downer, but now you have the potential to draw people with sidewalk cafes, lounge areas for retail shops, whatever you want. It's an interesting idea.
So I'm just, I'm thinking about like, you know, like driving home from work or some path you've done a thousand times, right? And then you, you're getting in your driveway and you're like, I have no recollection of that trip. Because that's how deeply ingrained our driving behaviors are. He's voted on important decisions tonight. I mean, that's why when we change something, it gets a visceral reaction, whether you're talking about traffic circles or road diets, right? Or left turn, green arrow first. Like, we got blown up about that for, you know, a year. And then inevitably people get used to it and it's fine. It doesn't matter whether or not the change is objectively better or worse, it's just different. And, and I don't think that this is any different than that. I think it is a change that's touching a lot of people, so we're hearing about it a lot more. The question is, is the policy benefit, is the system and the benefit we're getting out of this change worth going through that period? Because inevitably, people will get used to it. Like, I've had, like, we were talking about this with, with some kids, with some high schoolers around, they're like, yeah, they teach reverse angle in driver's ed now. Like, that's part of driver's ed. Like, it is inevitably the future. So is it worth going through this? Maybe, maybe not. Like, I can see it both ways. But I don't think it's objectively bad just because we're getting pushback because the pushback's inevitable.
We'll do Commissioner, Commissioner Hunt and then Commissioner Purush.
I know we're not talking about the Sentry system tonight, but I have concerns about changing the parking to parallel when we still have such a significant issue with the system itself. I understand you say that they now, or Commissioner Douglas says that it now takes the quarters without issue. But we have such a grand system that we're now just using quarters for again because the concierge service doesn't work. I've had issues with the concierge service, I've had issues with the app. So I have issues with changing particular portions of it when there's still going to be issues with the system itself. I, I would concur with Mr. Bray that we take a holistic look at it, we take an overview look at it and determine how to fix it overall rather than piecemeal. That's just my thought.
Mr. Purush?
Just a couple of things. I think if we were going to go to parallel parking, we would have more complaints than we're getting right now because of the loss of the number of parking spaces that are on the street. That's a significant loss. And I understand the concerns of the merchants. I understand that they're getting a lot of complaints. But I think they are going to be getting more complaints and they're going to be more frustrated if they lose 30% of their parking. That's number one. Number two, I, I understand some of the frustration with the back-end parking. I, I can't do it, I cannot back into my own driveway without going over the lawn. So I don't even try to do those parking spaces. I'm into the deck. But on the other hand, every time I drive down Washington, and I drive down Washington a lot, those spaces are all full. And they're filled with people who have backed in. It's rare now to see a, a nose-in car. It was, it was fairly typical at the beginning, but not now. Now, when you drive down Washington, you may see one, you may see another. But for the most part, I would say 98% of the people are backing in. So somebody is using those parking spaces. If they, if they were terrible, if they were awful, you would see a lot of just empty spaces. But they're not empty. I mean, rarely do you drive down Washington and find an available space, period. So I understand the frustration, but I, I, somebody's using those spaces. And changing, I think, to parallel parking, the loss of those spaces would be a huge, huge thing. And, and having it converted back to nose-in when it's an inconsistent set of features with the rest of the system, I think that would be a huge, huge issue. Because you're going to be, people will say, well, I park on Main Street and I can do this, but I'm going over in Washington and I can't do that? I mean, we're just going to generate even more complaints. So I think you have to have a consistent system throughout and decide what it's going to be and then stick with it. So I, I understand the frustration. But I, I agree with, with Ms. Donahue that six months is, is not that long of a time to, to have people get used to the system. Especially when the whole economic system is changing and COVID is coming, going away, hopefully, and people are doing more, getting out more, salons are open more. It's, it's, I, I understand the patience, but I think we have to be a little bit more patient with it and solve the problems that we can solve, especially with the MPS electronics systems. Those, I think, are significant and, and they need to do a better job with that. But in terms of the actual configuration, I don't think it's the time to do little tweaks here and there just to reduce the yelling, at least for the time being.
So, kind of a creative idea here. You know, there's a, there's a logic here to give it a little bit longer and then there's a logic to say, okay, buy us some time because we can extract data from this system. That's one benefit at least. Maybe not that's user-facing, but at least back-end, we can get data on the spots. And we can have someone come in and do some consulting, like to look at policy and everything like that, and get some time to fix the, the machines that need fixing. Here's the, here's the idea. Do you do a try-it-before-you-buy-it campaign, reverse angle parking, on, on Washington where all of a sudden it's, I don't want to say it's a non-enforcement zone, but you can back in, you know, you don't have to pay. And, you know, it's not strictly enforced for six months or something. To get people used to the idea of doing this where it becomes a benefit. So if you have apprehension about it, at least there's a, you know, a cost benefit to, to do it. Just a thought. I don't know if that fixes the situation. And I think too, I mean, we all have a responsibility as well. And I think people, some people are, you know, genuinely concerned about their business and people come in and they say they hate it, and there's, there's no doubt about that. And then you have folks that of course, like, love to just like, you know, for whatever reason, it will never, ever make sense to me, call up the news stations and everything and say, ooh, I hate my city. Let's go tell people never to come to Royal Oak, even though they have no jurisdiction whatsoever as far as being a business or whatever. They just, I have a different saying about what a dog, even a dog knows better not to do certain thing in his own cage. And I, and I think like, you know, part of the equation here is, is like, to help those customers, every business is an ambassador, like, hey, we have the Lafayette garage, we have these other spots. You know, because, you know, we do have these other complic, there's always unintended consequences. And Commissioner Purush highlighted all of them. No matter what you do, you're going to have an issue. So the thought is, if it's a matter of people hating it, do you do a try-it-before-you-buy-it? And just do something creative on Washington to get people to start using it, you know, and feeling better about it versus feeling like they're backing in and then they have a risk of getting a ticket or having to pay. Just a thought.
Commissioner Macy and then Commissioner Collo and then Commissioner Douglas.
So this meeting with retailers, there only could be three commissioners present because otherwise then it's an open meeting and it gets, we have to. Notice it and all of that. So I think the three commissioners here who are, I think, thinking the most that back-end angled parking doesn't work are the three who are there. Because the retailers were so adamant about how bad it is. They weren't just like, this is a parking problem that you guys need to solve. And we did in fact get numbers, I think this was emailed to us as well about the salon, that the Birmingham location is up 60% in sales and the Royal Oak location has dropped 60% in sales. That they could actually see their business moving away from Royal Oak. Didn't that email go to everybody or not?
Yeah, but it's not scientific. I mean, it's anecdotal.
It's okay. It is data that they provided that shows, that shows how their business has been impacted by this. And they all, they invited us multiple times, all of us, to come sit in any of their businesses downtown for one, on Washington, just for one day and just listen. They will say, every single person who comes in complains. It's not just like one or two all day long, every day. Is this not what they were saying? It was, so I mean, I'm not a fan of back-end angled parking myself, but this, this was overwhelming how much that they were really upset about it.[1767.02] And we were talking, you know, we were talking about like, what could the possible solutions be? Did they're concerned about the parking? And we listed various things, like, we could try this and this. And it seemed to me like the number one concern was how bad that back-end angled parking was. And so, the fact that we were, they brought it to us and we talked about it, and we were saying, "Well, let's give it a little bit more time to try." I think it's going to be deeply unsatisfying to people who've been trying it for six months, seeing their business impacted and hearing their customers complain incessantly about how bad it is. I don't think it's like tweaking the system. I think we're solving, I think as Commissioner Collo said, like a raging fire. We've got to put it out. It's, it's bad. That's, that was the message from that, from that meeting, not just like, oh, you know, we have all these complaints about meetings, about parking. It seemed really bad. And I think this, this parallel parking is not an ideal solution. It's not the one that I would pick. But the answer of doing nothing does not seem like a good one to me at all.
Commissioner Collo, Commissioner Douglas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, you know, I think what really we should come back to here is the mechanics of back-end angled parking. And that's kind of been lost in this discussion, but, and maybe the chief could talk about this. Other cities who have back-end angled parking do not have the same configuration that we do, correct?
I don't know that for certain. I know Oak Park has it on nine mile, but I, I don't know if there is the lane to allow the person behind you to get around it. The biggest frustration we get right now, the, the most negative feedback, is the back-end angle. And I think a lot of that frustration comes from the fact that there is no room to get around. So when someone stops and then they go to back end, there's somebody directly behind them, and there is no room to get around that vehicle. And I think that's one of the number-one complaints we get from that style of parking.
Do you think that parallel parking could potentially alleviate some of these issues that we're seeing with complaints right now?
I think if there's room to, the traffic can flow and not come to a standstill. I think that would ease some of the burden. But then again, I don't know if losing the spots is something to consider also.
Thank you. So, and that's a conversation I think we've kind of lost, or is that the mechanics just don't exist. There's not that escape lane, and we cannot have an escape lane as long as we have the back-end angled parking. We have, as Mr. Brake said, 6,300 spaces in our downtown.
Forty-six hundred.
Forty-six hundred.
Forty-six, sorry, forty-six hundred. Losing 30 of those is not going to negatively impact the whole system. And as Commissioner Macy was pointing out, I mean, every retailer was upset about this. Now, there is hyperbole there. There are exaggerated figures, and it's not every customer coming in. But I do believe it's a good majority of people. And I know that, you know, there's social media comments and people pile on on social media, but there is some truth in there. So you have to pick out, there's glimmers of everything in there. And I think that between the mechanics of the road just not being set up, reverse angle parking, the amount of complaints we've received, both citizen and corporate, and then the fact that this is, once again, it's paint on a road that we could temporarily change, let this study be conducted, and then decide what we're going to do in the long term. This just seems like a way that we can mitigate, like Commissioner Macy said, a raging fire here, and at least tamper it down a little, and then we can really focus on, okay, is it a system issue with the meters itself? Is that what the problem is? And that's going to be the way to do it, in my opinion.
Commissioner Douglas?
Is there a way, Ms. Donahue, to, I'm in the baby splitting tonight, to have reverse angle on one side and parallel on the other and gain enough space for a passing lane, as it were?
Probably. It's hard to say without actually drawing it out to scale. I think you buy yourself another 10 feet or so, which is a lane width, so it sounds right. But I don't want to give you the 100% stamp of approval.
So I don't know. Maybe there's, maybe, maybe that's a, but, because it's not just a matter of paint. It's a matter of moving the bollards and moving the pucks.
But Chief, I think Chief will tell you that MPS is able to do that.
Quickly.
Quickly, as they just told us in the past.
The, the infrastructure is there, but it would require moving pucks in the roadway and actually moving the bollards and I believe some saw cutting. So I believe it would be a two-to-three-week process, start to finish, I believe, was what we were understanding.
And a lot of damaged sidewalk along with that, because we're adding a bunch of saw cuts, and then, yeah.
So, the other thing that just I can't, and maybe my colleagues can help me out here, that I can't figure out, and I know we look at everything differently here because, you know, we just start a little bit more involved with the city clearly. But when I look at the parking, like, I see these spots on Washington, okay, reverse angle. I completely understand people's learning curve and frustration. Like, I'm not denying that people don't come into businesses and complain. What I'm trying to figure out is, like, when you go to every side street, just about, there's parallel parking on every side street. You know, these spots, no matter what you do, are going to fill up first anyhow. You know what I mean? There's a Lafayette parking garage. Is it wayfinding? Is it that people are just, is it like when I'm at Myers and, you know, someone's holding up traffic to park at that spot that's like three spots away from the building? Even though like, there's like, Spot 6 is open, but they waited there for like, six minutes for that car to move out, burning gas and everything? Is that just like this psychology issue that we have as humans? Like, what is it, like, when I go, I mean, I got my secret spots on 6. You know, I always know that there's going to be parallel parking there. You can drive up and down Washington on a Friday night. And if I want something relatively close, I can go check out 6th Street, and usually I'll find a parallel parking spot there. You know what I mean? I, I guess I'm having a hard time understanding how someone will walk a farther distance to go to the Walmart clothing section than, you know, a smaller distance from the Lafayette garage with two hours free parking to a business, and that's why they're never coming to Royal Oak again. I mean, I, I get it that some people are going to say that, but I'm just having a hard time at being a very, very rational person. And part of me being rational is understanding not every decision is rational.
Commissioner Douglas?
No, that was just a right on, not a wave.
And I mean that sincerely. I don't, I mean, this is what I'm trying to understand, you know? Commissioner Collo?
Unfortunately, I don't think we're going to change the human psyche at this table tonight, which is, well, once again, gets back to the mechanics of it. You have that one person at Walmart trying to turn the wrong way, holding up the entire lane. Now we have backups, you know, people honking. Like, you know, yes, I agree with you. You know, maybe, maybe in an ideal situation, this could have worked. But I don't think we have an ideal situation right now.
Can we vote on this and see where we're going?
Do you want to call for the vote? All right, so this is going to, from reverse angle to parallel parking. It'll be a reduction of 33 spots total on Washington. How many, just real quick before I vote, how many spots do we have total right now on this strip of Washington? I'm sorry to do this to you, Ms. Donahue.
They, they might know better. From my report, we had estimated 120.
116. Oh, yeah, that's right.
That includes 7th Street, though. You're right. That does include 7th Street.
Okay. So it's a, it's a reduction. It's a, it's a third. Okay.
Wait, how many spots are in the parking garage right behind that and adjacent to it?
500. All right. Well, I guess I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed?
No.
See a hand to the nose? All right, nose, got it. So nothing's changed. Any other motions? Commissioner Macy?
Wait, give me for this. I was going to move to adjourn.
Okay, you can move to adjourn if you want.
Can move to adjourn.
Motion by Commissioner Macy, second by Commissioner Hunt. Discussion? All right, with now a call for the vote, all those in here say aye. Opposed, motion passes. We're adjourned.